And she's like, "We're not here to discuss that."
We're not talking here to talk about Benghazi. We're here to talk about the Middle East. Everyone's like, "Guzan in the Middle East."
Welcome to the April 9th school board meeting. Let's start off with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, given that we have a ton of motions to read, did you want to move the girls' basketball? How many, how many girls have someplace to go right after this?
She recalled.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So if it's a, if it pleases the board to move the recognition for the basketball team down to the next agenda item and then we can go after that?
Yep.
All right. So Coach Allen, if you could just stand up, sir. Just recognition to the girls for fabulous season. Great game, I got to watch, got to watch both the semifinal and the final games. And it's not often I, I have enough time to do that. And I love the way you play the game. Love the passion that you show. How you can win a game, a playoff game with 19 turnovers? I don't know. But you guys did a great job. So Coach Allen, it's a great program and that's what I look for as superintendent. Is it, is it a program? Is it, are you not just winning games? But are you developing people who are going to be successful? There are things you learn on the court and on the field and on the track that will serve you well in later life. And to me, one of those biggest things is that there are times you just have to worry about what's in front of you. Don't worry about this, don't worry about that. If you worry about whether or not you're going to score the next time down the court, you're probably not going to be scoring because you have to be focused on what you have to do, not what the results might be. So I believe in the value of co and extracurricular activities and especially athletics. And from everything that I've seen, you group of folks are an example of the sort of programs that, that we respect and want to develop. So congratulations on your success and also congratulations on how you got there. That's just as important. So, thank you.
Thank you. Speech, speech. You can, you could say something.
You guys, you gotta do it in the microphone.
Hello?
It's on. First, I'd like to say thank you for all your support throughout the season. These girls have worked very, very hard and sacrificed a lot of their time and efforts and blood, sweat and tears into their school. I believe they're the epitome of what the school stands for, character, courage, respect and responsibility. They've shown all that and more throughout, throughout my, my time here and especially this past season. So again, we'd like to thank you for your support and it's just amazing group of girls and thank you all very much.
Thanks, Coach Allen.
Mr. Borch is going to come join you and if you could read out the names or you're going to do, do the honors. All right. And I think you're left with the responsibility of delivering the ones for the girls who are not here tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to first say congratulations also. It was a lot of fun because I have seen the last, I think, three games that you played and it was a lot of fun watching you play.
Thank you.
First, Hannah Fabiana. Amber Givens.
I was hearing speaker number one. He played for Hannah though.
Talia Hart.
I can talk about that.
Avery LaTroy.
Thank you.
Rebecca Landro. Hannah Neal. Alex.
Alexis.
Alexis. Lex Walker. Brittany. Brittany Reedy. Alexandra Rubenes. And Kaylee. Elekronka.
Great job, girls.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
And this is, she's a national, it's only the second one. She's going to be going to.
It's not Canadian English.
Could you grab one for me as well?
Summary of non-public from March 19th, 2014.
I can give online.
Mr. York made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of March 5th, 2014 as written. Mr. Burke second. Motion carried 401. Mrs. Lepore abstaining. Mr. York made a motion to accept 2014-2015 GMS staff nominations as presented. Mr. Burke second. The motion carried 500. Mr. Barker made a motion to accept the 2014-2015 LMS staff nominations as presented. Mr. Burke second. Motion carried 500. Mr. York made a motion to accept the 2014-2015 CHS staff nominations as presented. Mr. Burke second. The motion carried 500. Mr. Barker made a motion to accept the 2014-2015 district-wide staff nominations as presented. Mr. Burke second. Motion carried 500. Mr. York made a motion to accept 2014-2015 revised administrative staff nominations as presented. Mr. Burke second. Motion carried 500. Mr. Barker made a motion to accept the resignation of Maureen Carr, LMS nurse effective June 30th, 2014. Mr. Burke second. Motion carried 500. Mr. Barker made a motion to accept the resignation of Maria Semino, LMS Spanish teacher effective June 30th, 2014. Mr. York second. Motion carried 500. Mr. Barker made a motion to accept the resignation of Susan McGowan, GMS teacher effective June 30th, 2014. Mr. Burke second. Motion carried 500. Brings us to correspondence.
Received. An email from Mr. Garrett with a link to a video called "Building the Machine", which was a video produced that was critical of the procedures for the Common Core, especially the lack of public input. By and large, it was a relatively balanced presentation. In general, it was, it was negative towards the Common Core and the, the procedures. Most of it was based on allegations of using soft money to push a federal mandate in education. Not so much substantive comment about the Common Core themselves, although the, two of the dissenting people actually commented on, on the issues that they had. Interestingly, one of the people who criticized, who was there as an expert and criticized the Smarter Balance was one of the folks who talked about the SAT as the Scholastic Achievement Test. Well, the SAT was the Scholastic Aptitude Test from the first half of the century up until about 1990, early 90s. And then the data really didn't show that it predicted scholastic aptitude very well, so they changed the name to the Scholastic Achievement Test. And that lasted to the late 90s. And for almost 20 years now, the SAT dropped the dots and stands for SAT. That's it. Strangely enough, the best predictor of how you're going to school and next, do in school next year is how you did in school this year. But when combined with other things like grades, it is, it is a pretty good predictor. So it's interesting that someone who was considered to be an expert didn't even know what this word SAT stood for. So that was my comment of that.
Next, I'd like to recognize as a school board, Harrison Hildago, who on September 25th earned his Eagle Scout Award. So congratulations.
The ceremony is this Saturday at 3:00 at Presbyterian Church, right next to the firehouse.
Next, we have draft minutes. Did you make that change?
I did.
On 3:19. I have a motion to accept the draft minutes.
So may.
As written. Second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries 400. Lost my page.
Community forum?
Oh, community here.
Would our community like a forum?
There we are. Superintendent Tennis comments?
Just want to comment that I was in LMS this week and I'd forgotten that this is the week that they were starting their Smarter Balance testing. And Mr. Lucklater, after we did our quick tour of the building, we cut into the library where Ms. Wagner and students were, were working on, the grade fives are doing Common Core math. This is, again, not an adaptive piece. Part of this is system checks, but part of it is also collecting data from a great range of students to do the, the psychometric measurements and, and grade level assessments and things like that down the road. And it was interesting to see the, the grade fives working away. So they were given 31 math problems. Actually, Ms. Late was there as well. She must have been.
Was that in my class?
Was it? Okay, thank you. Kids were actually quite engaged and Mr. Lucklater, if you wanted to talk about, you work with staff to do some orientation to the tools. You want to take us through just very briefly now, rather than wait for your report?
Absolutely.
How, how that went?
Yeah.
Because I was actually very pleased with the way students were engaged.
So just to go back a little bit, this was back before, before the 1st of January that the three schools had all put in, basically applied to be selected and the middle school was selected. So prior to the first week of field test, we did a number of things. A lot of these things are recommended by Smarter Balance. One of them is to have the students participate in, in a sort of a test of, a practice test of, of what they're going to see on the real test. And really what that's more about is navigating the tools that Brian mentioned, which would be, you know, like where the, where the calculator is, if you want to highlight a passage for the ELA section, just different, different things like that, just navigating the technology. So we did that with students ahead of time. In addition to that, we, we did a training with the staff. We did a few different things, but we had a few staff that were going to be actually proctoring the test, so they, they did legwork ahead of time to become familiar with how that, how that works. At our most recent staff meeting, we engaged in the practice test ourselves and took the ELA, the math, and so the way the test sets up is there are non-performance tasks and there are performance tasks. The non-performance tasks are, they're interactive. So the students are not just answering multiple choice questions. They might have a math problem that asks a question where they, they might, there, there may be a number of correct answers and there may be a number of incorrect answers and they have to select from a group of answers and put them in a category of correct or not correct or equal or not equal, you know, so. And they're, they're clicking and so we did that as a staff and went really well. The, the non-performance tasks are much quicker. The other part of the test is a performance task where students are, it's basically a real-life problem that applies their math skills or ELA skills, depending on what the test is. And it takes, when they're actually taking the test, it takes two days. So we looked at that as a staff. And then this past week, we started, we started the testing, as Dr. Cocker mentioned, first was that grade five. Grade five is testing in the math area. So far, they've done the non-performance. Next week will be the performance task. I've been very impressed at the student engagement. I mean, the kids are really taking this seriously. They're, they have not only the tools on the, on the computer, but they also have paper, they're scratching notes and, and really doing a nice job. The ELA is a little more time involved. There's a few additional components to the ELA. And again, we've done the non-performance tasks and they're continuing through, through Friday. And then next week, and then, so the non-performance tasks are a few days and then in between, there's actually, this is pretty interesting, I didn't realize until we actually got into it, but there's a classroom activity that happens before the performance task. The classroom activity sort of sets the table. It gives them a little bit of background knowledge, a little bit of prerequisite knowledge so that they can assume the performance task more smoothly. And that actually was, that classroom activity for one group was, was today. It went really well and it was, it was, it was not computer-based at all. It's the teacher following a script and the students are interacting with the teacher. There's a lot of open-ended questions and some discussion. So there's a lot of components to this test and I think the biggest challenge upfront for us was just the infrastructure. How is that going to work? How is the connectivity going to be? How is the speed of the technology going to be? The only glitches we've run into are glitches on the Smarter Balance end and we've had to make a few calls to the 911 line to get help on like access codes, student codes, things like that. In some cases, it was disruptive. In some cases, we missed, we were, we were, we had to basically disrupt the whole session and then reschedule that. And so, you know, that plays with our master schedule a little bit, but otherwise it's, it's gone smoothly. Carolyn, I want a few comments on. So Ms. Late, Ms. Wagner, Ms. Corbille are really in the trenches of, of the proctoring of, of the test and we test through next week and been really impressed with the level of engagement of the, of the students. The, the last thing I'll say is, I've talked a lot this year about our, and I know Scott has too, about performance assessment and that whole, that whole initiative. And it's really neat to see on the performance tasks for ELA and math, it really lines up with what we're, what we're doing. The language and, and everything really lines up. And so I think it's, it's a high-level test, a lot of, a lot of good, high-level cognitive rigor questions and I think we're, we're seeing more of that on a day-to-day basis in the classrooms, so.
I was surprised at how challenging for grade five math items they were. And equally impressed that even students who, some students were done the 31 questions. Some were just wrapping up and others were only halfway through and we're going to finish, we're not going to finish in that one session. Kids persevering and working at the math. They were, the, the environment is very engaging. It's very visual. They didn't struggle with the technology and they really plugged away at it. So, you know, that, that to me was, was, was pretty impressive.
Yeah, that is, that, I know Ms. Late has seen the same thing. Of the 31 questions, we, we had students after 45 minutes that had only finished maybe seven out of 31. So that is definitely, they're, they're pretty lenient on time. So we have quite a bit of, we have a pretty big window of, of time. Students can pause the test. They can't like start a question, pause it and then come back the next day and answer the question, but they, they can pause if they're on number seven out of 31. They can pause it at the end of number seven and then pick it up on number eight the next day.
Now, what's interesting is, because this is, my guess is that with 31 questions, if you think of the math test, they're going to, you've got a lot of questions in one area of that math test that will go from well below grade five to significantly above grade five.
Right.
And so being non-adaptive, there are students who would, who would struggle. The questions did not get easier for them. So with the adaptive assessment, there won't be the same sort of time pieces and there'll be a higher level of, of success.
Yeah.
But I, like I say, I was most impressed. I mean, the first question that I saw, you know, said, you know, Mary has a piggy bank with, you know, quarters, dimes and nickels and pennies. She has $9 in dimes and she has half as many quarters as she does dimes and then da-da-da-da-da-da. How much money does she have? So the kids are, and writing and going down, this, this, and then back to the online screen calculator, this, this, and go back. No, that's not it. And so, you know, I, I would expect that one of the more common mistakes was be, would be to say, when it says they had half as many quarters as dimes, to take the $9 and say, well, that's $4.50 in quarters as opposed to it's 45 quarters. And that, one of the.
Forty-five quarters.
Of the students.
You like that math, no?
But of the students that I looked at, one made that mistake and did everything else perfectly and the others, you know. But I, I mean, it was really interesting to see the strategies and as, as Mr. Lucklater said, very fluent moving back and forth between the technology and the pen and paper that they had in front of them.
So how quickly do you see the results from the test?
We don't see individual results from the, from the field test. They're using these questions. They're testing the reliability of the questions.
Okay.
And that's going to be.
They really don't know, will they say this is how your, your test, your group did or anything like that? There's not, no feedback on that.
They'll not get a report on anything. No.
You, you said you didn't see any of the kids struggling with the, the technical portion of it?
That was my biggest concern was because a lot of the, like I, I played with the third grade one and I'm actually looking at the fifth grade one now.
Yeah.
And my biggest concern is not how hard the questions are, because good questions are hard, it's can they figure out how to answer them? Because I saw in the third grade one, there's this weird L-shaped thing with like drag and drop these lines that divide things up and show it. And it's great they have to learn how to do that, but do they know how to interact with the stuff and drag and drop?
And that is a great question. The, the one observation I, and I haven't seen to the depth that, that the teachers proctoring it have, but I've been in there, you know, to a large extent and seen them. Certainly the kids figured it out faster than I did as far as the navigation. They, they just, you know, they're just, if they're used to technology in general, the click and drag. The math is a little challenging though. Like if there's a fraction in math, putting that into a keyboard where they're trying to figure out the, the, you know, what's on top and then the slash, there is definitely a learning curve on, on that, I think. So the math is, is the bigger challenge when it comes to that from what I've seen.
They, we actually, we did the field test and we did like the practice and training test is where we taught them how to add fractions because they don't have a backslash. They don't have that fracture line, so it's actually a three-step process for them to add a physical fraction like one half in there. So we spent the better part of classes over the course of the week going through the practice test and teaching them, how do you do this? How do you do that? Those little red lines are just, I think the kids at home had nightmares of them. Because if you don't un-click it, wherever your mouse goes, you suddenly have a red line that goes straight across.
So that one right there?
Yeah. I can help you lay it on there, Eric, you know, but it was very interesting because some kids had lines going everywhere. And we're like, and then how to get rid of them. So we actually worked with them and taught them how to use the tools. So when you came in pretty much this week, it was like, yeah, they were zipping around. Once they got it, they got it, but it was kind of fun to help them get it out.
When I was doing some practice tests, what I found was you had to answer the questions in order. You couldn't jump, like if you figure out A, B real quick, boom, boom, and you, C was little and I went to D. I was paralyzed. I mean, there was one question took me 20 minutes because I kept going, I can't do this. Because I didn't do it, A, B, C, and C had two or three parts to it. If I didn't do it exactly, even, I could have been wrong, but I had to do the action.
We're told that in the final version, they should be able to do that.
They should be able to jump, jump around to that.
Exactly. They just don't have all their tools in place either.
That was, that was one of the things that I found.
Right.
And, and yes, I never did figure out how to undo the red line, so. I should probably ask my son and he'll help me on that, you know?
You know, when we were selected, I felt so honored that they selected us. But, you know, I was a little reluctant to, I mean, the amount of time and everything, but I have to say, knowing what's coming next year, this has been really helpful. It's been really helpful, I think, for all of us to see just all the components. The practice tests are really important. There's a, the training test is really more about the technology and how to navigate that, but that's really important. The training videos have been very helpful. So, you know, we've learned a lot already.
I had two quick questions. Number one, who did better in learning the technology quickly? The teachers or the students? And we can just don't answer that one if you don't have.
We did it together. We really did that we did it sometimes we figured it out quicker, other times there were 25 of us and two young ladies figured it out, went, oh, and it's like, well, thank you. So we did it together.
And was there any sense of feedback from the teachers who were looking over kids' shoulders in terms of their perceptions of the, of the questions and the assessment?
I, mostly from last week because we, we spent a lot of time at our staff. This was basically what we did last week at our staff meeting. And for the most part, the teachers would pair up and a lot of them were specific to their content areas. The, the biggest concern was the learning curve for the kids and the, and how are they going to be able to navigate the technology? It's a challenging test. And I, I heard many teachers say, particularly with the performance task, that the questions are, the questions are good. That's what we, you know, like I'd said earlier, that, this really is what we're striving to be doing. We're not teaching to the Smarter Balance test. We're trying to increase the cognitive rigor in what we're doing every day in classrooms to make it more relevant. And actually, that was another part of the ELA part of the test. We're finding that the texts are very interesting. There was a text about someone who had hiccups for like 15 years or something. The kids were very excited about.
That was the other one.
Yeah, they were very excited about that. So the teachers are finding that, you know, the, the texts are pretty engaging. That wasn't always the case in the past with standardized tests. So I think they've really made an effort to increase the level of interest on, on some of this and so the teachers have given us that feedback too, so.
Thank you very much.
School board comments? Record report?
I'm going to start with the last item, just as an FYI for now. We still have a lot of curriculum work to do. We do not have adopted curriculum in several areas of the four highly academic areas. Social studies is not, not been adopted, so we need to do that. Physical education and a couple of other areas. So as well as with our new curriculum frameworks, we need to write instructional units. And so the plan is to come up with some times, it looks like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday increments, so that groups of teachers can be working on that over the summer using our Title II funds. So we hope to get a lot accomplished in that time period.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On social studies, science?
Science was adopted in 2010. We'll be looking at it though.
This is my, we, we, we test through state in English and math. So I, I have to believe that somewhere in the universe, there are similar type testings that can be done for students for social studies and science.
But we have the state science test that, that.
Do we have the science?
Is planned to continue in the spring of each year, at least this time.
So what about social studies and, and where they're not there? And the only reason being is that, you know, you know, some of the things that the board discusses is, is making sure that the, the education process in the classroom is more rigorous and the, the students are always being challenged to, to rise to a higher level, whether it be through the students, the teachers and everything. And, you know, if, if, you know, the state RSA says that, you know, we're supposed to be tested across all five of the processes, but they don't. They only do two right now and they're going to be adding a third one. But, but there ought to be a way that, for, for the process so that we know whether or not we're doing a good job in social studies. You know, it, it's one thing for the, for the students to go through the process, get their grades and get, and whatever, but if they're not having to be challenged with having to take some sort of assessment to see where they're going. And it, you know, there's no reason why the district can't have something like that themselves. And, and I do understand that becomes challenging for administrators because kids are always on a computer taking a test and, and in that process. But, but there has to be a process where at the beginning of the year, we know where a student is. of the year, we know where a student is. Through the years, we see where that same student is, and at the end of the year. Because it, it allows us to see whether or not what we're teaching is, is, is strong curriculum.
Right.
Or, or whether or not how it's being taught, or how it's being absorbed by the student is, is not, is not working or is working.
Right. And we can go seek a ready-made standardized social studies test. Being certified in social studies, my vision would be that first, we need to write and adopt a curriculum. Then we need to build strong instructional units that include very rigorous assessments. And there's no reason why we can't monitor those locally. One of the initiatives of PERC, in its very name, is program evaluation. We've been kind of bogged down with resources because we're trying to catch up with some time in order to acquire appropriate resources in, within the budget cycle also. But we will be creating a program evaluation tool, and from there, we will take on all of the areas eventually. And probably, social studies should be one of the first, because it's otherwise unmonitored, as you said.
Right. And that's, and that's a curriculum that we're moving through the process. Now is a perfect time-
Yes.
-to, to, you know, to take a look at that. I mean, we're, we're spending an enormous amount of time and energy and resources in updating our technology process. And, and we've, we're working very hard on that, and we always understand that the taxpayers sometimes allow us to do more and sometimes allow us to do less. But, but I think the bottom line is that if we, if we go to them and show them the reasons and the processes behind that, I believe that they'll be very supportive in, in, in securing and allowing the resources to be used, whether it means having to add to the IT budget, having to, you know, purchase software in that sense. And, you know, my challenge to the PERC committee and, and to all administrators is that I understand that there are issues inside the budget and stuff, but that should not be what drives your decision process. Your decision process should be what is the best resources for your students and your teachers to increase that rigor and stuff. And then it becomes a responsibility of the superintendent and the school board and the business manager, as we analyze that and we deliver that to the budget committee, and we deliver it to the citizens in that process. But I would encourage all of you to not, you know, I hear a lot of times, you guys talk about the lack of the resources, and, and I understand that's there, but that should not be, you know, you should come in pushing us and demanding of us to try to figure that process out for you. And, and let us make that decision. And sometimes we may be disappointed, and sometimes we may not be disappointed. But the idea is that we should always be pushing that process, because it's, it's the only way we're going to move in the next ten years in that process of our, our kids being educated. And every year, we don't move that bar further means that another group of students are going, or, you know, are going through the process, and we're always having to play catch-up and stuff. So I know that there's a lot of work in the elementary school and, and middle school and the high school in that process, but I, again, increase the rigor, whatever we have to do to monitor that, that process. We need to be able to do that, because I think that makes for a better learning experience for the students and, and the teachers.
I'd be curious, though, is there, are there other ways to measure that? Because, I mean, I gotta imagine at some point, there's a law of diminishing returns, and, you know, kids take so many standardized tests, at some point, they don't matter anymore.
Right. And that's why I'm suggesting a local process whereby we have assessments that are built into every instructional unit.
It was just like your, your summit of evaluation and stuff like that?
Right. They will be a combination of your traditional tests, performance assessments like projects, papers, that kind of thing, portfolios. The, just like the high school has had to have competency-based assessments since 2005, by 2017, and hopefully, we'll move that date up for ourselves, just so we're in good shape, K eight needs to have that same process in place. So combining that with writing those instructional units, we will build strong assessments, hopefully, that we can monitor. And for instance, in the social studies, you will take a common thread, like reading maps, okay, map skills, and we will monitor that through each grade where it's appropriate, and the kids should be progressing in their skills to do that. You don't teach them longitude and latitude in first grade, but you teach them maybe where things are in the town, that kind of thing. What's the state of New Hampshire? About where is it in the United States? That kind of thing. The focus is on community in the first couple of grades. So it's those skills and content that go through several grades and often K-12 that, that you would monitor over time.
All right. I guess, I think to John's point, too, if we're approving these curriculums that are more rigorous, I think we have to know that when kids do graduate third grade, they do meet all the things that are-
And that's why the work that I'm talking about needs to, it's not all going to be accomplished. It takes a long time to write the very strong and effective instructional unit with all the components, but certainly, we will get a good start on that. It's, it's hard to be able to do that during the school year. There's limited time and other priorities. So if, if we get started, we're gonna have a common framework for all of those units. So moving forward, as teachers create new units, they're going to be vetted by other people, whether it's their grade level, their team, their department, at all grade levels. So it's not just one person writing a unit. It's many people putting their heads together using some protocols from the quality performance assessment and what's called critical friends that's been around a long time. And there's a process so that these assessments and units are vetted, analyzed by groups of people.
How often does that happen? So say, I use third grade, 'cause my daughter's in third grade, it's easy.
Yes.
So say, this is their second year through the Common Core curriculum or the new framework that we've adopted. Do they get together at the end of the year and say, you know what, this is working, this piece isn't working, and kind of start to revise it, or?
Well, this spring will probably be the first time we do that formally. I have confidence that it was done informally last year.
I'm sure they'll talk, but-
But if you'll recall, and when you look at the English, we purposely put these little lines throughout the document, and what we've asked the teachers to do individually and by teams is to put in the date range that they actually addressed those areas with the kids. So, and they're gonna be turning those into the principal, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to build in, and they all have team time of, and department time of one kind or another, whether it's May or June or both, where they'll sit and have those discussions before they turn those in. My vision is to have some kind of guiding questions that they can add to, but that, that will be a discussion process. And really, ideally, that discussion occurs so that when they come back in the fall, they've got some revised instruction that they're going to address.
We see, I don't, I don't think we have to see, like, the notes or anything, but do we see the fact that that happened, and maybe any tweaks that they made, or just so we know that's happening?
We can certainly work on how we represent that to them.
Just 'cause I know, I'm sure, you guys have questions all the time. People come and go and say, you know, are we doing Common Core? I, all this, I hear all this horrible stuff about it. And I always say, you know, you know, we're being flexible, we're agile, you know. Yes, we adopted it, but it's our own. We're making it our own. We're adapting to it. If we see stuff like that, we can, we can say that and, you know, not just be saying it.
Right. And yet, just be aware that, like, it could happen, but I, you know, because we based the, our framework on those standards, that what we're looking at is revision to instruction.
Yeah, I would imagine so.
Not the curriculum.
Yeah, so we have the framework, we've got the framework. We expect the kids, you know, and give them a good grade to know.
Right. And those discussions would carry over then to the work over the summer, where they're actually gonna build those units, or take some that they've already begun or have used, and make those revisions. Yep.
Would that include even looking at, like, the textbooks we're using and saying, you know, these just aren't working, or this chapter isn't working?
Oh, that's would definitely be part of that process. Yep. And they've done a lot of that in vetting these new resources that, you know, we've brought to you. That obviously has been part of the process. Yeah. We either need more materials, or what we're using isn't working. Yep.
I have to say that, to some extent, procedurally, we'll be applying to the Common Core curriculum what we apply the things that we do now. So when the NECAP results came out, I know Dr. Hyen and I met with GMS administration, and the first meeting that they'd had, they had spent, I'm thinking, four hours at looking at the individual question data and the strand data at the different grade levels, starting to see, well, why is it that we didn't score as well this way? Is it because, you know, something that used to be, and we moved some of our curriculum to Common Core, we're moving in that direction, so did that cause some misalignment? Are there areas that we're just not spending enough time on? So that skill set is there. And I think as we continue to work on and reinforce professional learning communities and, and looking at data, it becomes a, a matter of taking those conversations and applying them in a more knowledgeable way about Common Core, which gets us to when the smarter balanced first set of results come back, people will have to realize that there's gonna be three, at least three things that play into the results. One is, how long have you been, been making this transition? Some people were, were positioned to be able to make the transition to Common Core probably a couple of years earlier than others. We're more towards the back end, I would say, in terms of, of a lot of districts. The other thing is, what are the, the results compared to the standard? And the third thing is gonna be, how are our results at our school, and how do those compare to the rest of New Hampshire, to the rest of the country, and, and that sort of thing? So we're gonna have to look at the first set of results through multiple lenses to really start to see where we are, and then, you know, what will the focus be of, of the work from that point forward.
Okay. Moving on to PERC, I, I just wanna commend our staff. May not realize how much time it takes for them to vet the resources and make proposals, do the paperwork that's in front of you, and make these considered recommendations to PERC. So I really appreciate the efforts on the part of the staff at all the schools in this process. The first two items are courses, and these are recommended changes to the current program of studies. It won't really affect enrollment in any way. The first recommendation for freshman science is something that we have been talking about for, since actually last year, and we put it on hold because we had certain people who were certified, and we were able to get the scheduling done last year satisfactorily. But as we were looking at this year's scheduling, it came up again that it really, there would be several benefits to changing our current, as you see on this form, in the second half of the paper, previous courses were two separate courses, half-credit each. The kids had to change teacher at the mid-year. They might have the course in one order or another. So you weren't able to build on concepts from one course and the other, or to integrate them. And if you look at the new course description, really, the key here, and my comments in my report, is, is really the benefit of being integrating all of the sciences. Number one, they make more sense to kids when you're able to do that, and you can do projects or labs that have aspects from the various sciences integrated into them. And then as a second benefit, in terms of scheduling and trying to, you know, we have a critical shortage in all of the science areas. It always is difficult to find people who are certified in the isolated sciences, whereas a freshman science course could be taught by any of our science teachers.
I mean, there are at least five science teacher certifications in the state of New Hampshire. Physics, chemistry, physical science. If you're certified in physics, you can teach physical science. If you're certified in chemistry, you can teach physical science. And there's also space science and life science. The, they've just made the change. I think you notified me last week.
General science used to be through grade nine, now it's five through eight, but-
We have essentially five FTE science teachers at Campbell High School. In order to continue to offer the breadth of program, it's very difficult when enrollment shifts. If more students sign up for biology one year than another, the flexibility that, that this will allow in terms of the certification for that freshman science will, will be very helpful in that regard. And Campbell's one of the few high schools that offers a mandatory, that's somewhat of an oxymoron, requires a mandatory Earth science component to the high school program. It's not required, and I, I think the students are better off for it, quite honestly.
So what you're saying in this, in this case, you know, is we're gonna call it freshman science, but in, in retrospect, it's gonna cover both physical science and Earth science with the same teacher, teaching that intertwined class through the, through the-
Yep.
It's the full year, though, right? You take-
Yes, that's correct. One science credit, and it will be required for graduation.
They have the same teacher? So when they book it, they'll basically book for both semesters, that same slot?
Right. Correct. It's like a full-year English course or a full-year math, instead of those two half-credit course. Anytime you get away from a full-credit course, it gets dicey in terms of the scheduling.
So I, I guess I, what I was hearing you before was, half the students, freshmen, were taking Earth science, while the other half were taking physical science in the same semester.
That would be ideal.
And then they just switch.
Yes. That would be ideal, but it didn't always, the, part of the problem was it didn't work. And sometimes the computer wanted two-thirds of the kids taking one and the other, and we didn't have the faculty to accomplish that. Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do we need to approve that?
We do.
I'll make a motion to approve the freshman science, science course.
Second.
Aye.
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 Close.
Great. So the plan is, we'll revise the program of studies that's online, but again, it won't affect enrollment. We'll do that through the scheduling. The second course was an oversight. You know, it's hard to go through the 500 pages of, of the minimum standards. And going through the newly adopted minimum standards, which were finally adopted on March 26th, the fax teacher and I discovered that we were not meeting the requirement to offer a course with textiles and clothing as tied to that. Now, I do explain here that we may be offering that in alternate years, or it may be that we never have enough students to enroll it. But the idea is that the, the minimum standards tell us which courses have to be offered. So the, the course description that you have tries to, I mean, textiles in and itself, most kids wouldn't just wanna talk about fabric and what you do with it. So the idea is to tie what they're interested in, which is clothing and fashion, but to have kids use their critical thinking skills in terms of, why do you pick clothing that has certain fabric? And what might hold up better through cleaning, and what kinds of cleaning, you know, most kids don't even know what dry cleaning is, or, you know, how to launder in different kinds of temperatures, and, and all of those kinds of things that then become life skills. So that's the, we had lots of choices. Lenegi, our family and consumer science teacher here at the high school, did a lot of research about what kinds of courses other schools were offering, and we really made a hybrid of all of those to make it something that might interest kids. Questions?
Make a motion to accept. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Okay. Then we get to our resources. The first one, the fifth-grade reading class, the teacher would like to build a unit around the idea of sports in America. And I think she already has some materials, but she's looking at these that would really lend themselves to some of the skills in the new frameworks for complex thinking, reading and analyzing them, comparing, contrast them. You'll find that the two Jackie Robinson readings are at different levels, so that we can accommodate students' ability to read at different levels. Satchel Paige brings another point of view to that unit. So for instance, this would be one of those units. She's hoping to use those materials as soon as we can order them and begin building her unit and perhaps refining it over the summer, as we just talked about. We also in PERC talked about, you know, trying to make sure we have some female athletes in there, but I think the, I was told that the teacher was aware of that also.
So is the plan that it wouldn't be, all three materials wouldn't necessarily be used at once, but?
No, they would be. That, that, the first two in particular would be for students of different reading abilities, but they would still, the same theme, the idea of, you know, this Jackie Robinson, you know, breaking through and all the racial issues and so forth, and that Satchel Paige was a- was a similar sports figure. And the kids will be doing several readings throughout that unit. This is just to supplement what she already has. Any questions?
Turn page here.
Oh, I thought I had them all going in the right direction.
Yeah, that's all right, guys.
Yeah, because I really had, I thought I had them going all right.
Mine's turned. You guys like to make fun of me, but mine actually works.
Yeah, I know.
Look, I can do this, too. It goes back and forth.
Yeah, I could, yeah.
It's easier with a tablet.
So they're all pretty short. It looks like 64 pages.
Yeah, and you will see that. I think we've discussed before that although we want the students to read some lengthy pieces, the idea is that if we have some mid-range length pieces, they actually can read more text, a variety of text. And obviously, these are informational texts. We have a lot of literature and fiction in our schools, and this will add to our nonfiction.
This is for fifth grade?
Fifth grade, yes.
Is the plan that each student would only read one of the three? They pick which one they want to read?
They could possibly read more than one. Again, we haven't, the teacher has not designed the entire unit until she knows what resources she has available. But the idea is that each student would read several pieces of text of one kind or another.
So this is just in one class?
Yes.
Of the fifth grade?
Fifth grade. Remember, in fifth grade, we have both language arts and reading, and this is the reading class.
So the, so in this case, the teacher's just looking to expand the options that they presently have?
Yep. And with more informational text.
I'll make a motion to approve Promises to Keep.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Next name, four zero zero.
Make a motion to approve Jackie Robinson?
So that one has a 670 score.
Right. Which is, which would be considered at the low end of the grade level Lexile.
It would be for differentiation, right?
Yes.
The idea would be most students read this one, and then we have to have the students read this one instead?
Correct.
Well, and the other thing I know...
And, you know, then they have access to that. There's a little bit different information also, so you have to remember, only part of the equation, if you will, is the Lexile level. The other is the qualitative piece, what information is there, and then what the kids are going to do with it.
As Julie's mentioned before, Lexile score is a measure of text complexity. It's not a measure, really, of conceptual complexity and rigor, while we assume that those are always the same. In fact, they're not. You could have a more simpler piece of text, so there's a lower Lexile score, that actually is more cognitively demanding in terms of the ideas in it. So the Lexile itself is a component, as I know Julie has emphasized in the past.
So is this a, is this a book that would be used if you had a student who may be on a, that may not be at the reading level we would want them to be at?
That's exactly correct. Yep.
This is where this book would...
Right.
So they're reading about the same individual, but they're having something that may be a little easier for them to be...
That they can read independently and comprehend. That's exactly right. When we use the term differentiate, and I know we use a lot of educational lingo, but that means that we are looking at student differences, and we're trying to have them learn at their level. And they, too, would be challenged with some other materials, and that could possibly, even at 670, is challenging for some of our students who aren't even reading at that level. And obviously, our long-term goal is for more kids to read at a higher level, but we also have to, the expression is, take them from where they are and help them move forward. And we're talking about just ordering one class set of each of these, so that among the five fifth-grade classes, you know, only a few students would be reading each book.
So is this, so is this a class that would be, is this, I think I asked this, but this isn't something that'll be happening in every reading or literature class? This is just something that this specific teacher's going to use as her part or their part of their teaching process, or is this...
You mean this particular book?
These particular set of books.
Yes. There'll be, what we have, what we're doing is we're creating eventually what we will call protected text. So right now, the teachers, for instance, last year, they drafted what we called selected lists. Those pieces of text that they felt strongly and they wanted to have for their grade levels. And to some extent, we negotiated when somebody said, "Well, I want to use that in fifth grade or some, uh, sixth grade." And we, at the committee and the teachers at their grade levels, negotiated as to where those texts should be. At that point, once we finalize those lists, which will be again over the summer, those will become then protected lists. So we will ask teachers to look at those lists and not, and not assign them, definitely as class books, but also discourage kids from reading them as independent reading books, so that when they are going to use it in a class, you know, they won't say, "Oh, I read that already, I don't feel like reading it," that kind of thing.
I still understand the idea of, the need for a book that is an easier read, but I know that we spent a few minutes, or meeting a while ago, discussing that process, and that we really felt that, you know, that 900 would be on the lower end of where we would go, but now we're really going well, well below that. And while, and I truly understand the need for that, for the students in that aspect, but wouldn't that be much easier, something to be determined, where if that was a case that, that a student couldn't get a book in a library, whether it's an LMS library, or if it has to be a book that's even that from a GMS library that they could get?
And I hear what you're saying. What we don't want to do is have that student feel like they're being treated differently if they have to go to the library. If you have, conceivably, you could have five students, well, in the fifth grade, you could have as many as 10 or 15 students who weren't yet reading at that grade level. In some of our grades, we actually have that many students. And so the library might not have, you know, 15 books on Jackie Robinson at their Lexile level. Plus, when you hand out the other books, you want to have books to hand to the student. You don't want them to feel like, "Oh, I can't read, so I've got to trade to the library," or "I've got to be given this book that looks different. It's in the same kind of soft cover or similar," and, you know, you should have it right there to give to the kids.
No, no, I understand. So is, so if a student was struggling with the reading, is it, and I don't know, is it a presumption that they may be on a learning plan for that, whether it be an IAP or just a school-administered program to try to help them get their reading processes up to speed or back?
I don't think that, if I may, that that's not the question. The question is, students who aren't reading on the proper level would be getting some kind of intervention.
Okay.
And every one of our buildings, we have intervention plans, where there's a menu of interventions, depending on what the student needs are. The classroom teacher provides some of that. The chat teams in each of the buildings, the child study teams, who meet and discuss the students, have a variety of people, counselors and specialists on their teams that recommend different kinds of interventions. And when some things don't work, we make other recommendations. So that's all happening at the same time, that in the classroom, we want the students to be dealing with the same themes, the same concepts, trying, participating in the same complex thinking. Why was Jackie Robinson brave enough to agree to play in the major leagues? He was very successful in the Negro leagues. There's nothing to say that, you know, you know, so what was it? And so those are the kinds of really higher-order thinking, we talked about Smarter Balance, that are required by those assessments. And in fact, they say, "Compare two texts." So they could actually, regardless of what the readability is, these two books on Jackie Robinson deal with him a little bit differently. These are authors writing biographies from somewhat different perspectives. Then you look at Satchel Paige, which has, his situation was similar, but there were some differences. So now you get to compare and contrast. You're using that higher-order skill. There's just so much that you can do in terms of what's, see, this literature is merely a vehicle. You know, our goals are at the skill level, and the content, themes represent content, and knowledge about discrimination and racial issues and those kinds of things. And even the human aspect of how did this make people feel, and why did people spit at him and throw things at him, and all of those kinds of things that are really the core of what we want to be teaching students.
What grade level is the Jackie Robinson book?
Um, it, well, if, we're not using grade levels anymore, so if we look at the Lexiles, it would be third to fourth.
So what if someone wants to read about Satchel Paige? That would be his only choice?
The only one the school's going to provide. Right. But again, it's not about either Jackie Robinson or Satchel Paige. It's about looking at that theme. Yeah, and the teacher, I believe, has or will be looking for other texts that they already have, because they have an anthology in each grade level that has a lot of different texts, different stories, so pull from that. Sometimes they'll find something where they can print out just a few pages. So the idea is, we would like to be moving to, for lack of a better term, you might call them literature circles or groups. So different groups of students are going to read one or more books. And then, the whole class talks about these. They have discussions in groups, but then they also have whole-class discussions about these themes.
Can I just, I know a lot of this unit was developed in close, one of the resources that I know Heather used was Engage New York, and they're sort of ahead of the curve in the unit development, part of aligning the standards. So, this is just an overview of, and again, she's not, she's not taking every element of the unit, but this sort of gives you an overview of the unit and what was involved, how it was used. So the heart of the unit is a whole-class study of the short but challenging biography Promises to Keep: How Jackie Robinson Changed America by His Daughter Sharon Robinson. Students will read selected segments. Some of these will be read aloud. Students will analyze Jackie Robinson as a specific example of an athlete who served as a leader who broke barriers in society. They will also begin to study argumentative writing, analyzing how the author, Sharon Robinson, provides evidence to support her opinions. Students then choose to learn about one of three other respected sports figures, and again, I'm not exactly sure where Heather's going to go with this, but students will develop their understanding of the cultural context in which these athletes competed and the barriers these athletes broke during the times in which they lived. Students build their research skills by reading biographical articles and other informational texts, and by participating in web quests. They will also continue to build their skills to write arguments based on multiple sources, focusing on crafting clear opinions and providing sufficient reasons and evidence. For the final performance task, each student will write a letter to a publishing company explaining the need for a biography about their selected athlete, in which they discuss the athlete, evaluate the barriers that he or she broke during the era in which he or she lived, and give an opinion about the importance of the athlete's impact on American society. They must support their opinions with evidence from their research. So, I mean, that doesn't specifically answer, but kind of gives you a context.
We really have a chicken and egg issue here, which is, if we went ahead and wrote, spent all of the energy to write this unit, so that you'd see the whole thing, and then the materials weren't approved, that wouldn't be time spent. So what we're saying is, we have a vision, a framework for what this unit would look like. Once we have the approved resources, then we can continue to build that unit.
All right. All four?
So you accepted the first one, the first and second?
No.
No, we just accepted Promises to Keep. The motion on the table for Jackie Robinson.
There's no second yet.
Mine's turned. You guys like to make fun of me, but mine actually works.
Yeah, I know.
Look, I can do this, too. It goes back and forth.
Yeah, I could, yeah.
It's easier with a tablet.
So they're all pretty short. It looks like 64 pages.
Yeah, and you will see that. I think we've discussed before that although we want the students to read some lengthy pieces, the idea is that if we have some mid-range length pieces, they actually can read more text, a variety of text. And obviously, these are informational texts. We have a lot of literature and fiction in our schools, and this will add to our nonfiction.
This is for fifth grade?
Fifth grade, yes.
So is the plan that each student would only read one of the three? They pick which one they want to read?
They could possibly read more than one. Again, we haven't, the teacher has not designed the entire unit until she knows what resources she has available. But the idea is that each student would read several pieces of text, of one kind or another.
So this is just in one class?
Yes.
Of the fifth grade?
Fifth grade. Remember, in fifth grade, we have both language arts and reading, and this is the reading class.
So the, so in this case, the teacher's just looking to expand the options that they presently have?
Yep. And with more informational text.
I'll make a motion to approve Jackie Robinson.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Next name, four zero zero.
Thank you. The next item is for fifth-grade social studies, which is universally a study of US, the beginning of US history. And so this particular series, three books of a more lengthy series, a series goes all the way to the present day, I happen to be familiar with by using it in another district. Oops, we didn't send it around. I apologize. You could just take maybe one, there are different volumes of it. So if you just grab one, you'll get a sense.
If you look at the gears on the cover, it'll give you the...
You'll get a sense of it, no matter which volume you look at. The idea here is that this is a very unique text, that it's written as a story. Having often told my students that history is the story of people, this truly does that. Rather than just rattling off one fact after another, one date, one name, one place, that kids are expected to memorize, again, and I discussed this when we were talking about developing the social studies curriculum, it's really about concepts and skills that will be K through 12. And so because often students are not engaged, I don't know if you can recall reading a social studies history text in your life, and unless you loved history, it could often be dry and hard to understand, figure out what happened first and next, and who was involved, and what events or another. This is written very much as if you were reading a novel, that the people are characters in a larger story that occurs over time with lots of events that occur. And it's very engaging, and we would like to use it in fifth grade to really engage students more in social studies. The second benefit is that because it is written in that format, it becomes, it adds to our collection of informational text, or our overall literacy initiative, to have kids experience reading informational texts and really taking something away from it instead of scanning it, or not reading it, or just thinking of informational text as a bunch of facts. That's why those books we just talked about are stories about real people and the struggles that they have. In this case, it's the struggle of people over time in history, and fifth grade is, that's not going to change, dedicated to the early years of US history.
I think anybody who reads David McCullough understands that it, where in history is told as a story. It's so much more engaging for people, for kids.
Yes, for strategy people. So they all get to see the first three books? Or is this something that they'll be getting through a book a month, or how will this unfold? Do you plan on getting them, or I don't know, I get...
No, that, this is basically the period of history that, where we stop.
1600 to 1791?
Right. That's what they're doing now, and that part won't change. When we write the rest of the social studies curriculum... It, when we write the rest of, um, the, the social studies curriculum, it's not uncommon to, to go to just after the American Revolution, which is, you know, the late seventeen nineties. The middle school picks up from there and goes to somewhere at the end of the eighteen hundreds or beginning nineteen hundreds.
So the book could continue in the fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade?
If we felt it was appropriate, we'll take a look. There are actually high schools that use this when they have, um, US history in sophomore year.
Yes.
Some classes.
Fifth grade. Fifth grade, that'll, that'll get 'em.
What part are you looking at? I can't see. Oh, Indians of the Eastern?
We are the Raiders.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve where the book of Jackie Robinson coming down.
History of US.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Four zero zero.
Thank you. You can certainly borrow them anytime. Thanks. The last one is a revisit. Um, I realize that you, I don't recall if it was, you tabled it or voted against it, um, during your last meeting when Tom was here. But, um, both Tom and his staff and Burke felt strongly about it, and so we spent, um, quite a considerable amount of time looking at this piece of text. And, um, what I'll try to do briefly is respond to some of the things that I read about in the notes that were concerned. First, it was the lexile level. And again, I will say to you, and this is informational text, there is a lot of technical vocabulary in there. The names of food, the names of processes, food goes through, there's, uh, names of diseases and those kinds of things. So please, you always need to keep in mind, um, pass this around again, um, that that increases tremendously the level of difficulty. Science and social studies are, are two key areas, among others, obviously, that, um, the, the difficulty of the text is, is increased by all of the technical vocabulary in the text. And that's what you find here. Now, what we did do was, we looked back at the other version, I think Tom told you last time, that there is a different version of the book.
I hope I mentioned that.
Oh, okay. So there's a different version of the book, where the sentences are longer and there are more syllables in the sentence. Now that is usually the criteria for increasing the readability, that, the lexile score. The content on top of that makes this, in my view and the committee's view, a very difficult read, and the kids will be turned off. And, again, in terms of the qualitative piece and the task number, that third component, what are we gonna have kids do with it? If they don't read it, it makes no sense. They can't do the complex thinking, they can't do compare and contrast, they can't evaluate whether, what foods they should eat, should they change their diet, should they convince their parents to do different things. It's the kind of book, I don't know if you all recall, but recycling had occurred years ago, because it was taught in the schools, kids went home and pestered their parents. It didn't start with the adults, that's well documented. The same thing happens with nutrition. There are kids who usually take life science in eighth grade, my daughter was one of them, get turned off and become vegetarians. And sometimes convert other people and their families. I'm not saying that's going to happen. What I'm saying is, this kind of informational text needs to be accessible to kids, a reasonable independent read, um, with some guidance from the teacher, but with the technical vocabulary, um, the committee believes that that's the book that's appropriate for kids in this lit tech course. Yes, of course.
Can I just read the overview again? This is a springboard from that Engage New York, um, site, and this is sort of an overview of the unit. Students analyze arguments and the evidence used to support arguments to determine whether sufficient evidence has been used and whether the evidence is relevant in support of the claim an author or speaker is making. They then research to gather evidence to make their own spoken and written arguments. Students will read the book, a literary nonfiction text about where food comes from and about making decisions about what food to buy and eat. They build background knowledge about what happens to food before it gets to the consumer and the different choices the consumer can make when buying food. Uh, buying food while analyzing Michael Pollan, the argu, the author's arguments and the evidence he uses to support his claims. Students engage in a robust research project in which they further investigate the consequences of each of the food chains and the stakeholders affected in those food chains. They go through a process around decision-making and evidence, and then, um, this process will help students understand the implications of various choices and will scaffold their ability to determine, based on evidence and their own values, to take a position on which food chain they would choose if they were trying to feed everyone in the United States. Students finish the module by writing a position paper explaining which of Michael Pollan's food chain they would choose to feed the US and why, and creating a, a visual to state their position. The guiding questions of the unit, which of Michael Pollan's food supply chains would best feed the US? How do we make decisions about what we eat? What journey does food take before it gets to your plate? And has the author or speaker used sufficient relevant evidence and sound reasoning to support his or her claim? So I think it's important that, um, that, you know, the students understand and, and the approach to this is, is not necessarily that this is all, we expect you to take your side, but that it's, you know, sort of analyzing, um, the argument and then going along with their own.
Do you remember, was that, was, Michelle, do you remember what meeting that was, we discussed this?
It was the last one.
Last meeting, the nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
Next meeting, we're gonna invite, uh, Mr. Orban down to talk about Monsanto and genetically-modified foods, one of his favorite topics.
Right.
The second one reads like something that's very high.
Is the, uh, is the notes pretty detailed about what we discussed?
Is it intended for eighth grade?
I don't know if they're...
And I know, I know the lexile score, but it's, but who's, who's gonna be, is it gonna be kids in the LMS or is it gonna be kids in...
Oh, it's for the kids in this, no, it's the kids in this lit tech course, which is grading. Lit tech is, um, a course that's not a regular English class. It's a combination of literacy, primarily informational text and technology.
Most of the conversation was around the lexile number.
Right, that's what I thought.
We went back, we looked at this one, which actually comes out of thirteen ten, which is, which is beyond, that's, I'm not sure.
Quite high, yep.
Did we, do you remember, did we vote it?
No.
Down, or did we just send it back?
You wanted to hear Dr. Keon's, uh...
Yeah, we tabled it.
Okay, you, you brought the book forward then, okay.
Yes.
Was it the...
I think it is.
Just real quickly to the minister.
Yeah, I read the notes, it was the last one.
I actually think of myself as being able to read a complicated text without too much difficulty, but I find myself rereading one sentence about four times to make sure I got the, what the author was saying.
Sure.
The first one is much more accessible, I think, as far as getting the information. Being able to work with it, that's number.
Yep.
Ground.
Yeah, it says we, we, yeah, just tabled it to the ninth, okay. We did have a discussion about it, but...
It certainly opens a lot of, um, uh, doors to topics, you know, about food and nutrition and decision-making that kids in eighth grade should be thinking about.
And what was the lexile number of the second version of the book?
Thirteen ten, I think, which is high school, early college.
That's, uh, cause it, it read to me like a college textbook.
Yeah, well, because the sentences are very long, and then when you have the technical vocabulary inserted, makes it, like you said, having to reread, reread. Kids give up. There's no sense giving them something so hard, they won't read.
The level of text complexity and the level of analysis is not that different from a couple of texts that have been used in freshman reading at the college level, in some places. So, I, you know, well...
They'd have at least this...
It's a topic that will engage a lot of students. I, I don't find it to be a, uh, tremendously easy topic. Conceptually, there's a lot to it.
It sounds like, it seems like just reading paragraphs that, they're purposely trying to dumb down sentences to make the, the complex material easier to digest, is what it seems like they're doing.
Yes, I hear what you're saying.
Talking about core synthesis and stuff like that.
Correct. When you increase the level of difficulty because of the vocabulary, you would then construct your sentences in a way that, that is not such a struggle to get through. Newspapers do that same thing, you know, they purposely construct for certain audiences, but also based on the topic. And the other struggle is that because of the old lexile ranges, and now they've been increased, stretch is the term that they use, authors are, uh, need to crank out literally more literature that will be, um, more challenging. And, and they don't all exist, and we're not gonna wait ten years before we, um, um, you know, make choices for our students.
And the other thing is, the nature of the course that it's associated with, and that is a, a technology-based course, so it's...
Literacy with technology.
Yeah. It's, it's easy to find more difficult and complex texts to go with this. If this is too high, you lose them, as, as Dr. Yan pointed out. But if you do it at a readability level and then supplement with others, which is exactly what the course is about, because if they're doing research, if they're doing reading, if they're comparing what different people are saying, then it makes sense to me that, is it Jody's recommendation?
Yes.
I mean, she's gone through the class with them, and if she feels that it serves that function, um, I, I would certainly take her counsel very wisely.
How, how many books on average you think an eighth grader reads through the course of a year? And whatever books are mandated.
You mean a, like a novel, like...
Yeah, well, yeah, like a good-sized book like that.
The thing is, I mean, nowadays, we're using so many, so many texts, short stories, so a, a novel like that, uh, one and two a quarter?
Okay. So I mean, they're getting plenty of reading material, so if this one's a little bit low lexile level, it's not like it's, it's not setting a pattern or anything.
Right, 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 absolutely, yeah.
I do agree with you, that this one would be...
Carefree.
Whacking yourself in the head, you know?
It's a, it's a whole different look.
There's no pictures, how are they gonna know what they're doing?
That does make a difference, it really does.
Yeah, I will tell you, that, that's, that book is a much easier read than this one, that's for sure, you wanna take a look at that. There's no doubt about that.
I'll make a motion to approve the Omnivore's Dilemma.
Your second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? abstained. Four zero zero.
Thank you. And the last item is, um, policy recommendation. I hope I've got this right now, because we've been through this quite a bit.
We're not allowed to approve anything like that without Dennis around.
No, no, and, and this would be your first reading anyway, you need to have a second reading.
You're making, um, a change to the procedure, so you don't have to go through first and second reading, but I almost assume Miller had some comments.
Yeah, I, yeah, and, you know, and he's got eight years of experience on these things that are always well, well-used when we're, when we're making the, going through the process here.
So, um, this, um, the, the document that says policies and procedures IJL revised, Michelle has kindly, um, inserted the wording that's proposed and deleted all of the lists, the two different lists, one through ten and one through five, that were previously existed. And then, also, you have a document that's the, is the revised tool, and, um, this is the same one as, um, I brought the last time, except that, I hope, that, um, on the last page where we have the policy requirements, um, eliminated the criteria, because it, it would no longer exist in that list form. I don't see that here, Michelle.
I, I formatted, um, the curriculum resource tool right into the policy, so as you scroll through...
Up, I didn't go far enough. Got it.
As you scroll through, you'll see it.
Yep, got it.
I think this is where we had mine, but again, I, I would table it until Dennis is back. Cause I know we feel strongly about it.
Table it on the next meeting.
Yeah, it would only be three pages, we can fix that, Michelle. There's that blank page in there, but that's not a big deal.
Did you get three pages? I'm gonna get two. For the, no, I've got like thirteen pages.
Oh yeah, I do. There you go. There's that blank page, maybe stop, page four maybe stop, yeah. It's sorry.
I'm sorry, was there a motion to table that?
I, I think, I think, I think, what, I mean, you're not up against the wall on anything on this, so I...
No, we're gonna use it because, as our report, one way or the other, because I can bring you anything for a report. But the request was to make it official.
Right.
Yep.
The best thing, I would, I would use, this one is a pretty important one, I'd use the same process as the board uses when they're creating a new one. You know, this can be our first review and, you know, when, next time we meet, we can look at it again, and that'll probably be when we really tear it apart and it gets stuck in, gets stuck in a review for a while, but...
I'm sure there'll be some tweaking to the language.
But, uh, that would be my, my thoughts on that, because Dennis will read something and immediately knows where conflicts with another policy, so...
We need a motion, table it for next meeting?
No, just a consensus is fine. Okay. The last item is at the top of the page, and that's the, uh, long-awaited English Language Arts, K through twelve curriculum framework. And it, there are no substitute changes from the draft that you got a month ago. Primarily, I had not added the appendices at that time, which I did here, because they are referenced throughout the document.
I know I just started reviewing it, so I'm not in a position to approve a four hundred forty-five-page document. I know that we went through it, when we got the math, when we, uh, we sort of went through it, um, in reviewing it, I, I don't know if it was page by page, but it was, you know, chunks at a time. Um, then we got to the part where we had an issue with the, with the high school and we had to send it back to the high school to work on it, so, um, I'd like to be able to spend a little bit more time going through this.
Yep.
Um, then, one... When did we get this, did we get this on the fifth?
Um, this particular version is from last week, it was posted last week, but it's, like I said, it's the same as the...
Oh, we got it in our, in our, in our packet. When did we get it in our packet before?
A month ago.
That would've been the fifth?
I can't if it was the fifth or the month before that.
That would've been in February.
It was posted on a, a time when I wasn't here, but I wanted you to have it.
Okay, alright.
Oh, it was the last time I was here, a month ago, because I referenced that it was the draft.
Oh, in February then?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, just, yeah, questions, it's in all of them. Um, so under most of the foundational skills, again, I'm looking at third grade.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so under foundational skills is fluency. Um, it basically says, you know, can read with sufficient accuracy and fluency to support comprehension, page thirty-nine. Um, and then it has the lexile band.
Yep.
So, I'm, I'm assuming, like, as part of the curriculum and, uh, the educational process, the teachers are basically giving students reading text within that level and then, you know, testing the speed with the read and then the comprehension levels and stuff like that. I believe, does it kneecaps or kneelists do the same thing? They can actually measure it?
That is correct. The, the, um, map test, which is by NWEA, um, always reports both a RIT score, which is a unit score, and a percentile, but also a lexile score, yep. So we have those...
That's the comprehension level that actually...
Yes. Well, not comprehension. It's a prediction of their decoding, that they can read the words.
Not as how to comprehend them.
No, that's a separate...
This is saying can read and comprehend, right, is what this is saying.
Right. Comprehension is a separate score. In fact, when we take the MAP test, there are five strands, five areas that are reported out.
So that's something that the teachers work through, throughout the year?
Correct. And the, you know, the goal is to, at the beginning of the year, you do more things at the low and middle end of the lexile, and then you move to the higher end. The reality is that all these grade levels, even first grade, even kindergarten for that matter, have kids that have a range. And the harder part is that as every grade higher, the range gets bigger, actually, because some kids keep moving forward, other kids move forward at a different rate, and other kids are really struggling. So they use all kinds of interventions, if you will, whether it's reading groups. And at GMS, we have three reading tutors that participate in the expanded reading time, and then you have special educators who are working with kids on an individual or even smaller group basis. So sometime we should probably talk about the interventions, K to 12, we're sort of still working on that system, but each building has a menu, or what is referred to as a pyramid of interventions. And the bottom of the pyramid is your classroom, where you have your regular classroom instruction, and then all of the interventions that the classroom teacher does. And then the next band is referred to as Tier Two, and somewhere around 15 to 25 percent of the kids might get your Title One, or some kind of tutoring, or small group, even with special ed teachers. And then the Tier Three are probably about 5 to 7 percent of kids who aren't successful in the other tiers, and really often have one-to-one or one-to-two kind of intervention for usually more challenging issues that the student would have. So all of that comes into play as to how the teachers address this lexile. You know, that's a target. It's a target that some kids already meet or exceed because of their own learning. It's going to be out of the reach of some kids, and that over time, we're hoping that with the strategies we've put in place, the new curriculum framework and the new instructional units, more kids will improve their reading. And you notice that they're in that same place where you are, in every grade, it says students shall be assigned some developmentally appropriate independent reading throughout the school year. So you have guided reading, something that's particularly challenging. There may be parts like this that they read together in class, out loud, or in small groups, or under the supervision of the teacher, and then whether it's the same material or different material, they're expected to read independently. So it's really a two-pronged process.
You mentioned kindergarten. So for kindergarten, one of the objectives of ask and answer questions will key detail text?
Mm-hmm.
Are they actually reading that, or is it the teacher reading the story, and then they're answering questions about?
Both, you would hope by the end of the year of kindergarten, that in their, you know, Jack sat on the ball or something, that they are doing some of their own reading.
The next page just said, name all upper lowercase letters.
Yeah, right. Different time of the year. And again, the challenge is, some kids.
Test they give them on day one.
Some kids come in doing that, bang, no problem, did it maybe a year or two even before that, and we have some kids in first grade who still struggle with that. That's the nature of public school. You know, also, you are free to email me or Dr. Cochran with questions, so that the next time we visit this, I can have, you can have answers to a lot of your questions. Those appendices are particularly helpful. There are examples of, you know, Tom was telling you, some of the units that are readings that were developed by New York. There are also some samples in Appendix A that talk about the value of different readings and why you would use those, and then there's a lot about literacy in the other subject areas, integrating through social science and other subjects. It says technical areas, but we've expanded that to the arts as well. We feel that that's very appropriate, and I don't know if you came to the arts day last, you know, time last week, but all the kids had little passages that they wrote, or captions, or whatever. They actually spent quite, especially in the lower grades, spent quite a bit of time developing those, and that's nonfiction writing, because they were writing about their own pieces of art. And at the high school, they write very lengthy analyses of their artwork, of the process that they went through, so. And there's some writing samples in Appendix C.
Any questions? Do you want to revisit this on the 23rd? Is that not enough time if you want to go?
Well, I think that we should, we, it'll probably take one or two meetings, normally on a document like this, before the board gets to a point where they're ready to vote, or whether or not they have questions that they send back to the administration, so.
So we want to come back to it in two meetings?
I think we should come back to it on our next meeting, but it ought to be on the agenda for the next, you know, Dennis will put the agenda, but it ought to be on the next one, and then depending on how far we get at the next meeting on that, so. Looks like a lot of work.
Thank you for your time. We try.
Just trying to find everything is, in itself is, I jump from Appendix A to Appendix B to Appendix C.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going to move on to principal reports. Mr. Thompson at GMS.
All right, thank you. Some of these are follow-up items, they're just, you know, where we stand, they were mentioned at the March meeting, but we were working on the Fisher-Cass reading challenge. I just want you to know that that has gone by. I did check, and we don't find out yet how many students participated, but we hope that it was a lot. But something more to the point for April, this is National Poetry Month. We're doing a couple things in the school to honor that. Mrs. Ash takes this on each year as her own special project, and every morning, we begin with a fourth grader from her classroom who is reading a poem to all the other students. And Mrs. Pavel Tumel is organizing Poem in My Pocket Day. We did not do that last year, and I said, what is that? So every student has a poem that they carry with them, and they try to find as many adult audience members as they can, and have like a poetry jam on the spur of the moment. So that'll be a busy day. If there are any adults who are in the building, be prepared that you may be asked to hear a poem.
Oh.
That'd be fun. Grade Four is having a visit from the New Hampshire History Museum coming up on the last week before vacation, and then they'll also visit the Lowell Mills National Historic Site that week as part of their learning about the Industrial Revolution. Since the last principal's report, it was about to happen, but the chorus traveled to Goffstown to participate in the NHMEA Large Group Festival. I didn't actually know until I went to the chorus concert, and, I'm sorry, Phil Martin said that GMS is the only elementary school chorus who participates in this. I never knew that. And I actually went to the NHGMEA website, and they do sell it as a middle school, high school event, so I think it's quite an honor that our chorus goes. There was a letter that arrived today, but I am going to refer to Mr. Leclie, who has a similar letter, and he'll read that, because the middle school apparently also went. Congratulations to our six teams who participated in, on the same day, the New Hampshire DI-Kingston Regional Tournament. None of the teams actually were going on to the state this year, but I got to see all of the teams in at least one of their challenges, and most of them in both. They have one that they planned, and one is a spontaneous three-minute event, and it was some impressive. I actually liked the spontaneous event, where the kids were given a challenge and had to figure out how to do it, because there you could actually see the teamwork in process. It was pretty exciting. The chorus and the fourth grade recorder ensemble participated and performed to full houses at the Fine Arts Festival's concerts on the 18th and 20th. The next day, the buzz around the school was really the mass choir piece, Africa. People apparently were really taken with that. It was quite impressive. Our first through third graders are getting ready for spring arts performances at GMS. They'll be coming up the week before April vacation. The fourth graders save up their special performance, as you're probably well aware, for Recognition Week at the end of the fourth grade. Special Friends Day, grandparents and other special friends, that will be for families of first graders on the 25th. I'd like to mention and acknowledge Mrs. Labatt, who works with the chorus, but this week, they're beginning doing some Celtic dancing in PE classes as part of our PE curriculum. We offer dance, and so this will be part of the performances for spring arts coming up in April. The Quality Performance Assessment Team attended the last regional network meeting on April 3rd at the Creponi Center, and our final project through that, that network was a project entitled A Dog Park in Litchfield. And that was initially authored by Ms. Farrow, actually, and then Mrs. Leary, and she worked with the team, but Mrs. Leary tried it out with her fourth graders. We took it to the site, and what we learned from our whole year-long involvement with that is, I would say more than anything, something about how to do performance assessments and how to create them. So it was really, in our view, even though we're done with the year, we're in the beginning phase of bringing them into the school across the board. We have finalized our spring assessment schedule. As mentioned, we'll be doing grade four science kneecaps, that came up earlier, that's the first full week of May after vacation. Grade K through four Ames Web assessments, grades one through four NWEA assessments. And because April vacation falls so late, we actually have to go into the beginning of June to get all of that in. Some acknowledgements, this is Volunteer Appreciation Week, last week, I believe. No, I think it is this week, sorry. We started, there were things going on last week. But I would like to acknowledge some special volunteers at GMS. First of all, just to share, students participated in acknowledging the volunteers. There were posters all over the school by each grade level, and basically, they say thank you. Teachers became volunteers, and staff members baked for more than 100 regular volunteers, like people who are on a schedule and in classrooms throughout the year, and there's a lot of things being done to acknowledge that. Because of the time of year, there are a couple groups of volunteers I'd like to mention. First of all, there are four people who are continually involved in chorus, and they're every Wednesday morning at performances, and they are Noreen Labatt, who does the choreography, Bob Towne, who serves as like a manager of the chorus, Don Sullivan shares that role, and then accompanies Lyanna Eastman, and I'd like to thank them for their continued dedication to the program. Then we have a number of people who made DI a success. Marissa Fluid was the coordinator for DI, and then, there are eight coaches, so I think it's eight. Susan Haley, Stacy Lenke, Tiffany McKinnon, Margaret Norton, David Walsh, Claire Chu, Mary Watt, Jamie Watt, Sarah Morin, and Marissa Fluid. That's actually 10, I think. Our Lego club coaches, again, this is a volunteer position, but Susan Haley coached grade one, Jen Matthews, grade two, Liz Fay, grade three, and Carrie Sullivan, grade four. These are teachers, but I'd like to thank Mrs. Miller and Mrs. LaBelle for so much extra time that they spent towards the Arts Festival and our spring arts. They do a lot above and beyond the daily teaching that they do. Chess club is coming to a close. Thank you to Natalie Hardy for another successful year of running it. We are in semifinal week today, and then next week are the finals, so we'll be done after that, but it's been a pretty successful year. Under upcoming events and other issues, this is an in-house field trip that I felt worthy of mention, in that it has some special requirements and effects. So at the last PTO meeting, Liz McDonald was trying to find a field trip that would work to help support grade three. She really worked the PTO to kind of divide up, so that every grade level has something. And somebody had fallen through, and they were looking for somebody to bring our third grade study of early settlers and early American history, especially the revolutionary period, alive for our third graders. So I was familiar with the Captain Morals Company, and they are revolutionary reenactors out of Epsom, and the PTO would like to bring them to GMS on Friday at the end of May. So what they do is they set up stations and teach students in 20 to 30-minute classes about aspects of life in early America for the settlers. But this last bit required, I think, some notification and beyond just this meeting. At the end, they typically shoot a cannon, which has nothing except for gunpowder, so it's noise and a lot of smoke. But if I just wanted to run that by the school board, and I have had them at schools I've been at before, in order to make this possible, we certainly keep the police informed, so, you know, that kind of thing, there's not a big surprise, and I certainly would like the board to be aware and to have a chance to discuss that if need be. Items of note, our third graders had dental screenings this week as part of the New Hampshire State Dental Survey, thanks to Sue Seebrook for setting that up. We did class pictures today, even though it was sunny, it was only in the 30s when we began, so we did them inside on the stage. Report cards are going home this Friday. The PTO Mother-Son Movie Night will be held at GMS this Friday. I would like to stress that in the literature they sent out, that this is for boys, and it can be a mother, or, you know, a grandmother, whoever they'd like to choose to bring. So it's really quite open and flexible. The idea is to give them a chance to do something fun together. This GMS School Care presentation, part of the district's effort to inform staff members about the insurance, will be held next Monday at 3:15. On April 22nd, we'll observe Earth Day with cleanup of the grounds. We'll also make it a griffy day, so students can wear their school t-shirts and sweatshirts. And last time I mentioned Art to Remember. I talked to Heidi Miller, and she has sent off artwork for every student in the school, grades K through four. It's a lot of artwork. They will be, order forms will come back the week before vacation, and they'll be due back on May 7th after vacation. And as you may recall, funds raised through that will allow the school to adopt a tiger and a polar bear, or some part of those, through the Wild Life Fund. Thank you. That's it.
Any questions?
We set to go on the cannon? Are we set to go on the cannon?
I don't think that's, I don't think we need to get involved with that. I think the superintendent should have the authority to see whether or not he's trying to blow up the schools. I mean, he allows the high school to play with trebuchets outside, so what's a cannon? It's the same thing.
I didn't know that.
So it's just a little older cannon, you're using one a little younger, that's all.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Leclie?
Okay, so busy time of year, you have a lot happening at the middle school. We had an annual event last week, our annual opening day celebration. The PTO is extensively involved in that. They come down, and we're celebrating opening day, which would have never happened in this field last week with the field conditions, although I think next week it will happen. So we've done this annually. The PTO comes in, they sell snacks, they give out a lot of different snacks as well. They conduct raffles with the students. We end up going outside at the end of We end up going outside at the end of lunch, who probably remembers this, and certain students who would like to can throw, not throw up, that was a little, I almost read the wrong way there. And the police are present, the police department, and are clocking the students' throws after lunch. So that went really well, and thank you to our PTO and their involvement every year with that, but this year went really well. Our annual LMS 5K Raider Run took place on Sunday. We had a nice turnout. The weather was really, really nice, it was in the 50s, sunny. Congratulations to all our finishers, and special thanks to Teresa Tarr and Jean Enriquez, and actually Coach Latwal, who's our track coach, was also real involved there, for sponsoring the event. We had a nice turnout.
Can I interrupt you real quick on that? The email that the track coach uses is an AOL account, and it's sent out to all the parents and things like that. Shouldn't that be a student, shouldn't that be a school account?
Good question. If it's a school employee, it should be from a school account.
It's coming out from an AOL account, so.
I'll look into that.
I meant to talk to you about that. You just popped the memory bubble there.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, she should have a school email.
Yeah.
Yep. Last week, or, well, it was actually more than that now, we celebrated the Arts Festival. Students did a great job. I know a lot of us were all there. Did a great job. Special thanks to Carolyn Lake, Sarah Evans, and Kathy Garbidian for all their work. Our spring sports seasons have begun. We have, as I mentioned, a home opener next week. We have our opening games on Thursday this week. Project Safeguard is coming up very quickly. That's May 14th over at St. Anselms College. We've done some fundraising. Carrie Finnegan does a lot of the work behind the planning for that. And that is, again, a seventh grade program.
With respect to spring sports, we are looking for more opportunities to recognize GMS and LMS students. And I understand we may have been remiss last year with our girls' softball team from the middle school.
Yes, they won the championship.
So please keep us advised and let us know. The other thing is, has there been a history of board members being invited to Project Safeguard? Is that something that?
I'm not sure. Do you remember?
I was gonna say, I think, 'cause I went, I think there were board members there. I think Mary might have been there.
We'll make sure that we, I mean, certainly, you're welcome. It's all day at St. Anselms College on the 14th, so we will.
You may end up doing cafeteria duty at St. A's.
Yeah, that's the high, one of the highlights of the day for the kids. There's college cafeteria, they serve all kinds of healthy food in there. They do have a nice snack bar.
I made the trip last year, and it was, it was very educational. Interesting to see the high school students in leadership roles with the middle school students. And the parent sessions were extremely informative, and I think gave parents a different look at their role. Highly recommend it.
I took some notes at one of those parent sessions, sometimes myself. I've talked a lot about our band and music program. One thing I wanted to highlight here was that we had our Large Group, bottom of that section there, our Large Group Festival. We had 55 students attend for three judges. They played three pieces, they received straight A's. So that was very impressive. And our music program continues to impress around the state at all these competitions. This is now, you know, the spring season brings a lot of these competitions, and the next one is, they do solo and ensemble, and then Great East is later in the spring. Melissa Mason, our Drama Club advisor, is working on the final details with the students for their spring production, which is the big, I forget the title, but it's "The Wolf on Trial," the three little pigs, the wolf is on trial. I can't get the title right off the top of my head, but they're gonna be performing next Wednesday and Thursday evenings. I want to thank Lori and the high school for accommodating us. It's a lot of logistics getting that nailed down in the spring, and there's a lot happening up here as well, so thank you for that. I already talked about the field test. Again, that's ongoing, continuing through next week. I had mentioned the, and Scott was saying, this stuff was about to happen. The guidance counselors from Campbell came up. They presented the program of studies. Since then, our students have turned in their slips, their selection sheets to the high school, and schedules are already in the works at this point.
Didn't, just a real quick, didn't most of the selections for the eighth grade students become more streamlined through the process of that, you know, there were seven classes and?
Yeah.
Is it just that they're sending in just the order they want to take them, or?
Well, there's still a few electives for some students.
Spanish.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's still?
Few choices.
Few choices, okay. But for the most part, it's pretty streamlined, yeah.
Yeah, there's not a lot of. So as, as GMS, we were involved in the Performance Assessment Network. I've been talking about that for a while. We also attended the final network meeting last week. And our team really, our goal really became very focused the second half of this year. We're really focusing, as I had mentioned, argument writing, opinion writing, persuasive writing, really focusing in that area. That's a huge piece of the revised standards, and it fits really well with.
And one of the best predictors of university success, by the way, in terms of the different styles of writing.
And it fits really well with the wirings of a middle school student. They love to argue. However, we're trying to emphasize the evidence piece of that. You have to have evidence. Just a longer lunch for, you know, no reason, it's not enough. I've also talked about this year Core Six. That's a really nice read on the revised standards. And we've been taking a focus each month at our staff meetings, and the next one is gonna be conducting discussions that foster student participation and critical thinking. Last month was academic vocabulary, so that'll be happening at our next meeting. Again, similar to GMS, we have upcoming assessments that will look familiar. The NIWA is May. Ames Web will be May slash June, actually. And then we also have the NECAP, that's the science test, Spring NECAP for Grade Eight We have an upcoming breakfast for our, sponsored by our Student Council, for students who have represented our core values of doing their best. That'll be coming up before vacation. We have about 25 students recognized quarterly at the breakfast. Third quarter was bumped out a few days because of snow days, but it ends on the 11th, Friday, and fourth quarter begins Monday. Report cards will be mailed home by the end of next week. We have a lot of events on our calendar, as you can see. Each grade level has their own event sort of coming up. So sixth grade, fifth grade did a Beaver Brook, a big study earlier in the year. Sixth grade has Nature's Classroom planning happening for next fall. The parent night is coming up the week before vacation on the 22nd. Our DC parent meeting, the last, final parent meeting before the trip, is April 24th, Thursday before vacation. And then I mentioned Project Safeguard is coming up in May. The DC trip is May 13th through 16th. And I wanted to hand out, some of these dates are still a bit tentative, but they're pretty firm now, the ones that involve the end of the year. This is our end-of-year date schedule. This is gonna be emailed out, and once it's really finalized, but I just wanted to run this by the board tonight.
I think I'll think you go first.
Am I getting enough copies around? Is it an attachment?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You gave me one, but.
I wasn't sure if it, okay, perfect.
You had a couple of questions on, a couple.
Okay, I missed it. Great, all right. So I won't repeat myself here, but just to go down the list, if there's anything on here that I didn't mention, the concert is to be announced. We have our eighth grade, eighth grade visit to Campbell coming up at the end of May. We have a fantastic turnout. We had a fantastic turnout for our first eighth grade dance meeting. The dance is gonna be Friday, June 6th. We have a lot of parents involved in the planning for that. They've already chosen their theme, they're getting decorations and so forth for that, so that's going really well. Our fourth grade visit to LMS is on June 10th, and our parent night is the same day that evening. And then we have some of our traditions and events at the end of the, end of the year. Grade Eight Cannibity Trip, the Terry Fox Walk is June 19th, our Academic Honors Ceremony on the, on the 19th that evening, and then our Promotion Ceremony, unless we have like two more snow days, it's not gonna happen, is the 20th, and our last student day, the 23rd.
Just for the record, Frank called two of the snow days this year. I was pretty good.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, so it's kind of a team effort, so I'm gonna let Leah start, so I don't steal any of her thunder.
Okay, well, first, we want to represent a few students. We found out who received Scholastic Art Awards, and I'll read out their names and the level of award that they received. So Hannah Mahaney received honorable mention, Jeffrey Briggs, honorable mention, Rebecca Gibson, Silver Key, Molly Gillespie, honorable mention, Stephanie Nabet, Silver Key, Dara Blackman, honorable mention, Quinn O'Connell got a Silver Key and an honorable mention. Samantha Monaxalous got an honorable mention on her portfolio and a Silver Key. Emily Thorpe got a Gold Key, a Silver Key on her portfolio and honorable mention, and she also received a National Silver Key Award, so she gets to go to Carnegie Hall to receive that award. So that's really big, so congratulations to her.
And this is our second Campbell student who, who was awarded at a national level, so we're very excited about that.
Those students will actually be here on the 23rd to receive their recognition awards.
And we also had Cody Jackson receiving a Gold Key, and Ben Penault receiving an honorable mention. A few more congratulations go out to the students who were accepted into the St. Paul Summer Program, which is, you probably know, an advanced studies program, a five-week program at St. Paul School. It's pretty academically rigorous, and they get to do a lot of other cool stuff there. So that's Amy Bastilles, Franklin Ramsey, and Matt Lepore. So congratulations to them. And some events coming up, the NHS will be hosting their Spring Fling Cleanup on April 23rd after school. So they'll be going along Albuquerque with trash bags and the gator and cleaning up trash all along the whole stretch of Albuquerque. We did that last year, and that ended up going really well. NHS will also be hosting a blood drive on Friday, April 18th, which will be open to students and teachers during the school day.
And school board members.
And school board members, so yeah, students and school employees. And the senior clap, the Senior Class Trip to Disney is coming up over April break. Mr. CHS, the male kind of beauty pageant, which we always have a lot of fun with, that's coming up on May 20th. And on that week also is our Neon Dance, which we started last year, that Student Council hosts. Student Council also hosts Mr. CHS. And that will happen on Friday, May 23rd. And both of those are during the week of Spring Fest, so kind of our big pep rally week. We have dress-up days. So that will be a very busy week for the Student Council and for the entire school. And on May 10th, that weekend, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there will be showings of the spring production crumpled classics. And that's all I have, and Ms. Rothhouse is gonna talk about John Nie, the speaker who came here before prom, because I wasn't there for that.
Okay, so we, before prom last Friday, had John Nie. He actually played football for the NFL. John Patterson was his coach at Eline College. And he went from being a pro football player to a drug addict, an alcoholic, and he shot heroin. He's now been clean for seven years, and this was his first speaking engagement. The students were very respectful. I think they got a lot out of the presentation. We talked to the students a lot about heroin. New Hampshire is, is right now filled with heroin. We have great concerns about the, the amount of heroin in New Hampshire. It's cheap, and so I think that it was, it was a timely presentation, and I appreciate that John Patterson and John Miller worked so hard to bring John Nie here and to do the presentation. He would be willing to do it in the future for, like, Project Safeguard or other things, because for him, it helps keep him sober, and it's important that he talks about it. Okay? Okay. So curriculum and instruction, on March 20th, we had 17 superintendents and administrators arrive from Atlanta, Georgia, to visit Campbell High School to learn more about competency, standard-based grading, personalized learning, sophomore and senior projects. This was from the League of Innovative Schools and the Commissioner of Education. They recommend people come to Campbell High School because they like our best practices. They like to talk about competencies and what we're doing here. We had eight senior students give the presentation, and our faculty members were available to answer questions from the team. The team also visited classrooms because they wanted to see teaching in our classrooms. We have sponsored teams from Maine, Vermont, Connecticut, and I think it was a few months ago, California. We are also planning to, you know, to have our teachers take the smarter balanced test at our next faculty meeting. I think that was a brilliant idea that Tom did. Our curriculum facilitators are continuing to align a curriculum and build an understanding of what students need to know and be able to do to be college and work-ready. We're also continuing to focus on Common Quality Performance Assessments, and we did attend the last workshop. This is really important for our NIASC accreditation also. Jody, I'll let you do your guidance piece now, and then I'll do the acknowledgements.
Is everybody, I'm taking the blackboard message I sent out on Monday, and then are you getting them now? Okay. I'm trying to make sure everybody gets those as well through that process. For some reason, Blackboard isn't allowing me to add additional names, so I have to forward the email that I got to everybody else, so it's a quirky system. We are, I love to refer to it as the funky time of year in the school counseling office because we're doing a lot of individual work. We have a lot of students that are concerned about having to leave us, not leave, but she will be leaving us, but, so it's just a transitional time of year. So not only are we preparing for new children to come in, and talking a lot with the staff at LMS, but we're also preparing to help students leave. So we're trying to balance that right now. So we're super busy, not only scholarships, and preparing for different awards ceremonies, but helping students find the summer learning opportunities that are available to them. We're also working heavily with the juniors right now and trying to get them to look at their opportunities that are out there for post-high school options, and trying to make sure they're aware of all the different college fairs that we have. Also working to start building the, the schedule for the fall for incoming people and the current people, so I'm trying to do that in the midst of all the other activities. Recent past, we did have the social media internet safety presentation that was hosted by the Hudson Police Department. We had about a dozen parents, not as heavily attended as we would have liked, but really eye-opening and helpful information for those that did attend, and somewhat scary too, if that, the internet can be, when you're realizing our youngsters are looking at that. So that was really helpful. We've also had, Manchester Community College was at our school on the 20th of March for an onsite acceptance day, where we had another six students accepted on the, on the dot, which was nice. And then as Tom mentioned, we've been down at LMS, working with students to, rather than feed them a ton of information that seems overwhelming, we really just focused on completing the course selection worksheet with the students rather than throwing too much information. So we talked to them about credits and options. I think that was a more valuable use of the time. We also presented a career and technical education presentation to all the current sophomores, so that class was aware of the different programs available to them at Alvern and Nashua. We had 29 applications go out, so I think that that's a record number of applications of students looking to go into a program at either Nashua or Alvern. We haven't heard yet who's been accepted and who hasn't, but we should know that information again soon. Again, we are gearing up even for AP exams, which we will be giving for. Again, we are gearing up even for AP exams, which we will be giving for a number of days in May, which also will overlap with the two days that we're giving science kneecap exams. So we have a lot of exams coming up. Additionally, we have a lot of transitional activities going on. And we have a meeting, I believe, with you, 19th of May, we'll be coming down. You'll have students coming up on the 27th, so a lot of in and out of the building right now. Lot of interesting stuff going on. Kind of welcome and tell some of the others it's time to leave the desk. So we're on both sides of the coin there too.
So here's some of our acknowledgements. First of all, we'd like to congratulate our, Mr. Chet Orban, who was nominated as our Teacher of the Year. He was recognized yesterday. Congratulations to Phil Martin and Jill Delo for an outstanding district choral and band concerts. Again, congratulations to Bobby Allen and the girls varsity basketball team for winning the state championship. Congratulations to Coach Langloyes and the boys varsity basketball team for being state runner-up. The junior and senior prom was held at the Granite Rose this past weekend. A special thanks to Jill Delo. She did an outstanding job in the prom committee. It was an amazing evening. The prince was Tom Wallace, the princess was Katie Kane, the king was Randy Jacks, and the queen was Samantha Monaxalos. Bill Benny, Bill Benny, Billings, Ben Billings, won a $500 scholarship for his athletic and academic achievement. Our FBLA students also placed in the state competition. We have Jacob Parsnick, who was third in public speaking, Nicole Levacia, who was second in business law, and then Madison Corbille, Kendra Cyfers, and Rachel Murray were number one in marketing. So that's really awesome. We had a number of students who participated in the Academic Excellence Fair. Outstanding job to Emily Thorpe, who was our National Art winner, but also to her teacher Denise Freeman. And we had twenty-one students who had a 3.5 or higher and were also two varsity sport athletes, go to the State House to be recognized by the governor and the NHIA. We'd like to thank all of our parents who attend morning coffees. They give us a lot of good information. Our robotics team volunteers for all their many hours of dedication. I gave you a whole list of upcoming events and by the second it gets changed, but we are going to look at trying to change the academic honors banquet. It will be in Valentino's. Some other things that are coming up are, we have a spaghetti dinner hosted by the class of 2016 this Friday at 5:00 at CHS. All As will be celebrated April 22nd at 6:30 at CHS. New Hampshire Scholars is May 13th. Our project, senior project evaluations are May 15th. And, you know, as you can see, we're really, we're right in the heat of everything. There's a lot going on. It's a lot of fun and we like to be busy, and we are really busy. Under old business, we told you last time we were here, we were gonna come back and talk about two different topics. So the first one was the international high school. And so we took a group to Bow High School and we talked to John House Myers, who is very committed to the international high school. And we told you that we would come back and we would present. So, Jody.
It was interesting. I had to bring my personal laptop to school because I was trying to think how I was gonna have a conversation with a gentleman from New Zealand when he was not about talking on the phone. So he said, "You need to Skype me." I said, "Well, great." I have Skype on the school laptop, so I brought my little tiny laptop and Laurie and I stuck our faces in on the camera.
It was really funny.
And he said it was 7:00 in the morning there. I felt bad for the poor man. We woke him up early. But he did send along, I mean, if everybody wants a copy, it's obviously, it's up to you. He did send along a memo that laid out what it would take for a school to even be considered as an international high school. And on the first page there, the first step is to apply for an F-1 visa, international fee-paying students. The process is twenty weeks at this point, which is pretty lengthy. So it's a five-month process. It's called a SEVIS certification. SEVIS stands for Student and Exchange Visitor Program Certification Process for Campbell High School. There is, in order to be looked at, to be certified, it's a $1,700 application fee plus a $655 onsite visit. So the initial cost for us would be just under $2,400 in order to apply for the F-1 visa. We were told, Philip told Laurie and I that there is some... There's a possibility that this twenty-week process is currently looking at being extended to be a one-year process. So it's kind of one of those, you jump onboard, you complete the application, and you hurry up and wait to be looked at. There is, on page two at the very top, according to what Philip had uncovered, he does give an amount, a dollar amount per student that the school would be able to receive if we had international students here.
And remember, they would come for more than one year. So they would apply to come to high school here and they could come for four years or they could come for two years. But they would come and they would live in our community and they would pay tuition.
There is, he did send me a very lengthy PowerPoint I was wanting to share with you, but it's so long, I can't even send it to you. I said the server didn't have enough memory to send it. So I did save that PowerPoint on, the district saved under guidance. So I don't know if all board members have access to that.
Yeah, we can also get it to Michelle.
Okay, yeah, it's quite lengthy, but it's about fifty-five slides of information.
Jody, when a student comes under this program, normally, and Mr. York has significant experience hosting morning training students, is this a goodness of your heart piece? Or are host families subsidized for hosting?
It's funny, Laurie and I were talking about that before we came in here and...
There is a stipend, but we didn't find it. So there is a stipend for the family. So it's so funny, 'cause I knew that question was gonna come up, but we're thinking it might be on the PowerPoint.
Exactly, and I just wasn't able to access it. So that's certainly something that I can find out and let you know about what that stipend would be per family. But rather than having that money go to a larger organization that you're probably familiar with, Mr. York, the money would go directly into the schools with the stipend for families. So the money is just appropriated differently.
So when a student comes here now from an international program, the people who run that program get all the money. And then out of the goodness of the heart, they find people that take them in, that pay for all of, you know, their food and expenses while they live there. And then the school takes them in and we don't get money for their resources other than having the diversity of having those students. So this is just, you know, another way that we can, you know, have diversity. Also, you know, if, they say that you should not take more than 5% of your student population, and we wouldn't, and the only other cost to us would be, they recommend that we would do some training and some working with these students and trying to do some, you know, activities for them because just so that it makes it easier for them to feel a part of our community quicker. So Leah can come back and do that.
Does it have to actually apply for the visa capability? Who has the legal responsibility?
The superintendent.
Thank you for offering.
I'm so glad I asked.
Nobody else asked.
Yeah, the superintendent.
So once the school has an F-1 visa, then the, this student exchange student can get a visa from... Well, it seems like right now they need a change in the law for it to work, but... So it's one of those things where you're hoping the law in DC will change on an immigration law. I'll hold your breath on that one.
Yes.
'Cause there is, yeah, 'cause there is the current law, which John House Myers has spent a lot of time on this because they really want to be able to... These students want to be able to go to college in the United States, so they feel that if they come to high school here, it will give them a better opportunity. And many of these families have, you know, a lot of money to be able to pay to give their kid... They have the resources to be able to...
Can I add to your update, Principal Rothaus? I just want to let folks know that Principal Rothaus has been busy with the NHIA. She has been presenting in their program for student athletes called Life of an Athlete. She ran the state cheer competition this year, and she was a few minutes late for the boys' basketball game, running from one competition to the other. And am I allowed to disclose your other activity for NHIA that you're gonna be at tomorrow?
You can.
She's on the search committee for the new executive director of the NHIA, and we're just hoping that she doesn't pull a Dick Cheney and declare herself the only qualified candidate.
So no, we should have, it's down to two finalists, so we should have a new director of the NHIA. A Life of an Athlete is a national program again. Campbell High School has been very active in Life of an Athlete. It's about students making really positive choices, not only for nutrition, but also, you know, avoiding substance abuse and being leaders. And Leah's brother actually went and your mother said, that he said, "Did Leah ever go to this?" And she said, "No," and he's like, "Yes." Not that I'm telling stories.
No, I heard that story too.
Jody, do you want to talk about the diploma?
We also pulled together a committee of teachers, counselors, administrators to talk about different diplomas. And the one that we focused on for now was Diploma with Distinction that we'd like to visit for our students. And I can pass this out as well, if you want to pass that down. This just breaks out very briefly what we talked about in different criteria that we thought would qualify a Campbell graduate as a student who graduates with a Diploma with Distinction. One of the pieces of the criteria was obtaining twenty-eight or more credits versus the twenty-four minimum that we have now. A minimum weighted GPA of a 3.80 and six or more credits of the twenty-eight or more from honors or AP courses. The Diploma with Distinction would be differentiated by a stamp on the student's diploma. And it's something that the students would be able to identify on college applications that they were working toward. We used different high schools in the state for our research, including Dover and Bedford were just two schools that we looked at and to see what their standards were for Diploma with Distinction. So this is what the committee came up with as criteria and thoughts.
The twenty-eight credits could include transfer credits such as V-LAX courses, dual enrollment, things like that?
That is true, from Dover and Bedford, yes, they do as well, so they certainly could take those in.
But the GPA requirement would be solely courses at Campbell?
Campbell only, as the V-LAX credits are not weighted towards the GPA, as you know. Right, that is correct.
This would start with incoming freshmen next year?
We were thinking sophomores, this year's freshmen.
Correct.
This year's freshmen, 'cause we figured we could let them know and they'd still have plenty of time to add it in.
The freshman program is pretty structured. Sophomores have some ability, but realistically, any sophomore who is strong academically should be in a situation where they could meet these requirements. And typically, what you don't want to do is handicap somebody who says at the last minute, "Oh, I didn't know." But I think, you know, that students are graduating with more than twenty-eight credits because they're taking additional credits now. So I, from my perspective, I don't think it's unfair to this year's sophomores to let them know now they can actually, you know, take more courses if needed next year to try and become eligible if they want it.
And we don't need an answer on this tonight. We just wanted to give you time to think about it.
Any idea, Jody, of this year's senior class? What percentage of students this would probably already apply to?
Well, if I think about, for our Academic Excellence Banquet
Three nights.
In May, which was a, is a 3.92 GPA. We have seventeen seniors that are gonna be invited, and that's a 3.92. Of those seventeen, they all had twenty or more. Yeah, I mean, of course, I can't tell you honors AP, but more than likely...
But somewhere in the seventy to twenty, seventeen to twenty range?
Correct.
Be a good guess?
I mean, these guys are a good, extra good class.
These kids are really good class.
Probably guarantee probably twenty a year.
Have you thought about any additional requirements about public service or any behavioral pieces? For example, some schools who have a Diploma with Distinction have a clause that says if a student has, you know, more than one Category X discipline incident. You know, or, I mean, the whole citizenship pieces as well as academics?
It really wasn't part of the committee's discussion. It's certainly something that everybody feels we should dig a little deeper on. Certainly we can go back to the drawing board, but I think we were looking just for the academic rigor. And maybe we have, maybe we have rose-colored glasses on, Laurie, but we automatically, I know, we assume that they, you know, they're this good academically that we, you know, hope for the best, but we didn't really bring that part of it up.
So the six credits for honors or AP courses, that means they'll add up to at least six classes. But there's one credit for each class?
Correct. There are, well, there is one AP class that does count for two credits, which is AP Calc. So that is a two-credit class, so that's the only, that would be the only class that would have a different credit bearing than others.
And why is that two credits?
It's every single day, while the other APs are every other.
We decided that, last year, that we wanted to see if we could entice students who might be thinking about AP Calculus to take it, knowing that they would get to work with a teacher every day and have that additional time. I think it's not worked as well as we had hoped, because I think some students conflicted out because it was a double class. But the numbers are still actually pretty strong in AP Calc this year.
They've been, they've been high, and last year our AP scores were phenomenal. So we were very happy about that.
And for the fall, I've already gone in and figured out how to run the AP classes, so there should be no conflicting out for any student. If they want to take every AP class we offer, it should all fit in.
So...
So you're doing two classes.
This is something you need the school board to respond to sooner because you're making schedules now? So you would need to, the sophomores of today...
It would certainly be helpful if we consider that.
I don't think I have to vote tonight, but I think they need to be able to start getting the word out to this year's sophomores and freshmen that the board is looking at this and give guidance, a chance to, you know, send this back out to folks and let them know so they can make some choices. The final iteration, I mean, what's theirs is the core part of, you know, schools that do this, what they have. You know, there's usually a weighted GPA. In some districts, they also allow students who meet an unweighted GPA and successfully complete with high grades to your CTE program, for example. So, you know, you can look at it and... So, you know, you can look, you can look at it in, in a couple of ways.
So just a couple of questions on this because, um, you have your valedictorian and so let's say that person didn't do twenty-eight credits. They just did the standard twenty-four credits. And you have other students that did the, you know, where, you know, where's this all? This is like a, a, a target, a moving target, cause we, we had a conversation earlier this year about four one hundredths of a point, so, um.
It's down to one one hundredth now.
Yeah, one one hundredth, you know. So my, my, you know, and, and you would expect that someone at that level of heritage would probably do, but that's not, that may not always, but that may not always occur. So I guess my question is just, just thinking outside the box from that is, is, um, if we're gonna create a, a, another diploma with a, with a certain type of, of distinction in, in recognizing these, these students and stuff like that, does that, does that bring
If, if you
minimize or bring into conflict that, that other, the other, the other two, um, positions?
Well, there's, there's always an interaction, but if you, from a policy perspective, I mean, you create policy to prohibit something, to require it, to incentivize it, to de-incentivize it. Um, if the board felt that it was a good thing to incentivize twenty-eight credits for highest achieving students, then you could, you know, announce to this year's sophomores that in order to be eligible for, you know, valedictorian or then you have to be, uh, achieve diploma, diploma with distinction. So, you know, it, it's something that if the board is going to do, I think you should do it before the sophomore classes has completed i- its last round of schedule changes. There's always a few, little bit of tinkering over the, the, the summer. Lori and, and Jody, does that make sense?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm guessing the way the math works, it probably wouldn't matter.
It probably, it does.
I'm guessing you need that in order to become valedictorian.
Right, right, exactly. When you start, when you start doing the mathematical, like, it's, it's fairly close and every class you take, it's, it's very important.
I would argue that
Will you have twenty-eight credits?
Yeah, what's, I mean, is it twenty-four to graduate?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure you have thirty-one.
So that's, yeah, I mean, last year I took all eight, I took, I didn't have a study last year, so. I mean, I would argue that if the valedictorian doesn't have twenty credits and they obviously weren't taking a very rigorous course load and they were just
They would never be able to get it.
getting straight A's, you know.
Well
But they wouldn't be able to do it cause you're
They probably won't be able to do it anyway because you need the AP weight, so.
You need the AP weight.
Yeah, I, I don't think that you would have that situation come up.
You wouldn't be able to, yep.
If you were to be in the running, as Leah well knows, because she can do the math as well as anybody, uh, the more courses you take at the AP level, the greater that you shade yourself towards that opportunity. So while it's theoretically possible, the students who are gonna be in, in the running for valedictorian usually wanna take as many honors, every honors class that they can and maximize their AP classes as well. Because if you don't, if you don't maximize your AP classes, you're
Leah, you will have thirty-one credits by the time you graduate in June, just so you know. So you'll have thirty-one, um, I'm looking up a couple of the other tops, twenty, thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, she's sitting at the table so we can ask her a question, but, uh,
Yeah.
We shouldn't ask her, anybody else.
Some of our top, like, there are, three of our top five kids will have thirty and thirty-one credits in June.
And I'm also only taking six courses this year, so that's
Cause you're such a slacker.
If you're comfortable with the notion of a diploma with distinction, you could
Why, I think we were
either vote on it or endorse it and, and say, you know, is there anything else that, that the board would like to look at? Are you happy with the criteria?
Well, we sort of agreed not to see and vote on anything on the same day if we could
That's true.
if we could help from doing that.
I endorse it though.
And I, I think we could, I think we could endorse it because we, we requested it as the school board that, that this get done. So I think that the endorsement is there, so I think that, you know, we should be able to, to, um, is there any, uh, policies or procedures that we're going to have to use?
I can't vote on it, but I'll endorse it. Leah wants it.
Graduation policy, because I think that it mentions a diploma with distinction is twenty-four.
So, and, and with that, we'll need a, they'll need to, they'll need to hammer down their next two weeks exactly how they're going to award this, you know, whether it's a stamp or a different cap or, or whatever, so that that can be approved also. Because that is, I think, something the school board has to approve.
I'd also like to put in a plug for the twenty-four credit diploma to be called the academic diploma. Lori and Jody and Leah, if you wanna, because I think there is a role for a very small number of students for a, a core diploma that meets the minimum New Hampshire requirements. You have
But that's twenty credits.
ESL, twenty credits. Uh, you have, uh, ALL students who struggle to get, you know, uh, the number of, of credits. We have specialized students, we have medical, medically fragile students who can't take a full range of courses. They may be able to, to take five courses a year and do well and get into university with those five courses, but don't have the, the capability to take a, a, a six or a seven load. And so there are some cases, in those cases where there's a core diploma, it's usually, uh, an application process. And it's, and so you don't just say, "Well, you can graduate with twenty." There needs to be a, a, a fairly clear rationale, a fairly clear process, and it usually, uh, are not allowed to apply for consideration until your third year in high school. Typically, this is something that, that are for students who are gonna graduate in five years because of circumstances, a student's in a car accident and, you know, I mean, there are reasons that, that, that a small number of students will be better served by a twenty-credit diploma. Uh, in some cases, it, it will mean the difference between graduating high school or not because school is, is not a happy place for some students. And if they have to come back for an additional year to get four more credits, we might lose them. And if they've successfully completed those twenty credits, they've, they've, they've accomplished something. But I don't think we wanna incentivize it, but I think
Are those twenty, are those the, uh, that's, that's twenty credits, that's not around with a lot of elective, right? That's the, you know, the three years of math, the science.
I think it's sixteen and a half and three and a half credits. The three and a half electives is
Still needs all the state, um, core requirements with minimal electives, so you're correct, John.
Right.
That's minimal electives. We've certainly worked really hard, I know especially this year, and Lori, you've had seven more years here than I have, but, and, and working with kids to be really creative about how to get them to be on track to graduate. Um, and we've used a lot of different options and alternatives, including Nashville's night school and Londonderry's night school and online classes. So we've done a pretty good job in trying to keep, keep those kids moving in the right direction, and it's, it's, it's a challenge, though, for sure.
But would that not, would that not, um, if we, if we, if we went to a twenty, would that not minimize that activity, you know? The idea behind the twenty-four credits when they, when they went to it, and I remember Dennis speaking to it a couple of times, was that, um, you know, we, we wanted it, we wanted it to be hard, and I understand, you know, what you're saying, Dr. Cochran, about the challenges behind that, but would it, I mean, unless the safeguards of, um, of how that and you got, you know, you, is, is so, it almost has to be as hard to graduate with twenty credits as it is to achieve the diploma with distinction. I mean, it has to be, you know, it, it just can't, it just can't be, you know, I don't like school. You know, that can't be the reason that it, that it occurs, but I, I mean, I understand that the, the state has a, you know, wants a zero percent dropout so that, that, you know, it, it makes it, um, a, a little tougher than that. But I, but I also know that we've had much success with students in Londonderry, Nashville Night School and and, you know, principals will come in and talk about how
Yeah.
these certain students went to these schools and, and, and that worked for them, and they were able to achieve the twenty-four credits that, that were necessary for, um, for graduation. I, and I, and I really wouldn't, I really would, um, I would hate to see, um, us be raising the standards for our, our most, our highest achievers, but at the same time creating an easier process without a very rigorous reasons and approval process for
Oh, I agree.
students on the lower end
I agree.
in that process, so, um, that's just, that's just my feeling on it.
Maybe if so, if it's only handful a year, maybe the board has to prove each one of them. Maybe you present them in non-public and the board signs off on them and that's the process.
But we wouldn't have enough, really enough information. We don't know the student, we don't
Lori would come and present to us and give us the reason or something.
Yep, because, um, Londonderry Night School actually is a twenty-credit diploma. So Londonderry, our kids that go to Londonderry Night, they get a twenty-credit diploma from Londonderry Night. They don't get a diploma from us.
Campbell.
We don't have a Campbell diploma that's a twenty-credit. So there have been a few situations that it's been very difficult, cause we have to, you know, make sure that they can get to Londonderry, so, you know, um, but we've always been able to work it out and, 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 you know, but I think that Dr. Cochran's point is, you know, what happens if we get that one? You know, would the board entertain, you know, if there was a crisis situation and we had that student? Could we give a core diploma for that one student if we couldn't get them overlooked? You know, that's what I think he said.
Then I would say, "That one student, you need to come into the board."
Right.
I don't think we set a policy, because I think once you set the policy, then that then creates a process where no, not, not judging anybody here, but that, okay, let's take this one to the board. And then we become the bad guys because we said no, because we're not, we're, and, and really, at this point in time, in this process, that's not the board's role to be the bad guy here. And, and that's really the, the setup, is that you're coming to us saying, "We have Londonderry," which I probably would, you would have to, you would have to say that there's absolutely no way that they could graduate from Londonderry. That would be the first criteria. There's physically unable to do anything through Londonderry before the board would even consider it here, because we, we have an avenue for someone to get twenty credits here. And I, and, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's, it's, it's really a, a board issue, but, um, but I also don't believe that, that there's enough information for, uh, for, for, for that to process going. I mean, I think there's a lot of work on the administration side that's gonna wanna convince us of that.
I think your student rep has something to add.
Um, yeah. I just wanted to know, so the current policy, well, not, I know you're talking about making a policy on it, but it's the current, um, kind of way of going about it, just on a case-by-case basis. Cause I think that it's really important to have that option, not just if someone says, "Oh, I don't like school," but there are cases where people have very serious medical problems where they will miss, you know, six months of school at a time, and it's not really something that's under their control, and when they're in school, they're working hard, but they, are, they aren't really able to attend school. So I think it's important to still have that option of graduating with a core diploma.
But, but if somebody is in a position where there is a medical situation, they can't come to school, the school is obligated to send a teacher to the class, to the, to the, to the student at their home. Is that correct? Do we do that?
If there's, if they're in a situation where they can learn.
Well, I, no, I understand that.
They're not, yeah. But if, if the board is willing to say, I, I agree completely with the scape, the safeguards. We do not want to set an expectation that you can slack for three years and then say, "Poor me, can I have a diploma even though I haven't worked very hard for the last three years?" Um, so as long as, as the board is, would be willing to consider on a case-by-case basis, passing a policy or actually, you know, requiring the, the, so that deserving case where this is in the student's best interest. They're in their fourth year of high school, but, you know.
And the committee, um, we did talk about a core diploma, and at that time, they wanted to table it. They didn't want it, bring that forward, just so you know. The, so we could go back to the committee if it was something that you would want us to go back and reform a committee.
I mean, that comes from like a personal perspective for me. When I was in eighth grade, I missed three months of school for medical problems. I wasn't, you know, I missed sixty days of school. And, um, I did all my work all by myself. I did, I had one tutor for one class and that was all. And if that was in high school, I wouldn't have been able to, you know, finish that semester. So I think, you know, even as me, you know, I'm a very hardworking student, I think that that case is, you know, important to bring into consideration.
I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, it's, it's a good point.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
This is the longest of the three principals who've had to sit here for a long time.
I know, and I told them I was gonna be short. Just kidding.
Curriculum and principals' reports?
Before the principals leave, is there anything that's occurring in your schools that, um, the school board, that you guys are trying, struggling through or whatever, that the school board can take a look at, that you guys may need help on from the school board, a direction from the school board? Cause you guys come in here, you give us such great positive things, which is great. And, um, but I have to believe that there have to be some obstacles or things that are occurring that, and that's not to undermine Dr. Cochran or anything, but I mean, I think
Oh, I can tell you, it's been a busy month.
And, and as some things are, some things are that just there, but I mean, there are things that I think that, you know, that the school board can help provide direction and stuff. That should be this also in your reports, so that there are things, you know, that are frustrating. You know, and, you know, maybe it is something that, it shouldn't be frustrating the fact that somebody, as Dr. Cochran is saying no about, but it should be something that's frustrating for everybody, and that this is, you know, for teachers, whatever. So we have an idea, we're going through our budget processes and we're going through other things. We have a, a better idea of what's going on in the schools that help us, help lay the foundation for budgets or make decisions and things like that that help, again, improve the educational process through the school. So I would encourage you, if you're going through those processes, and again, those should be things that, as a management team, you guys discuss before you bring them here, because at no point in time we wanna, you know, uh, undermine, uh, Dr. Cochran. But if there's an agreement on that, that, that this is something that you come to the board, then this is the time when you should bring it to us so that we can, um, you know, either be educated on it so that we know when we go into budget season or whatever, or as we're making our plans and having our discussions, um, as a board, giving direction to the superintendent, that we're understanding obstacles that are in your way and stuff like that.
Thank you.
What happens if it's us that's frustrated?
They should tell us.
Okay, good night.
Thank you, thank you all.
Yep.
Did you get in or not?
Yes, I do have committee reports. Brian, you watched the meeting? Did you take notes?
I did both. Read the notes, I watched it.
Okay.
I gotta go.
All right, so, so you know that the, the, um, well, at the budget meeting, we had, we did have, uh, a discussion. And Sidney Kouture's the new chair.
You almost didn't have a chair for a little while.
It was, it was, it was available there for a while where it was going. Um, and, uh, and I did bring up, um, the school board's concern of the, um, fact that when we bring in our experts from the school to present, um, budgets, that our experts get no questions, and then the following week, there's a ton of questions. So we went back and forth, you know, I, I reflected that I felt that, um, some members of the budget committee were, um, not looking at the budget numbers until sitting at that table. Maybe the first time they actually saw, you know, GMS's operating budget and things like that, because I find it hard to believe that, um, that if you work in the business world Because I find it hard to believe that, that if you work in the business world and you had a budget and you had to go know you were going to a meeting about a specific budget, that questions would not occur, that, that you could not ask the questions of the person presenting the budget. Well, you can only imagine the feedback I got on that. But anyhow, the, the selectmen's representative agreed that he, they, they felt the same way. And so we were looking for a solution. One, they thought maybe our representative should come twice. And I said, "Well, maybe our representative should just come the second time and we can have the administration preside the budget because they don't really have to answer any questions." Again, I was stirring the pot. And so we, as a board, need to decide exactly how we should go forward next year. Cindy said something to me as I was walking out, that years ago, the person came to both meetings. But again, they're there to present their budget and answer questions. It really, I mean, in retrospect, I mean, the operating budgets of the three schools are pretty fairly simple. The salaries and benefits are fairly simple. Really, the two budgets that they, they really need the experts on are IT budget and, and special services. I mean, those are normally the two that they, they get, they have, you know, it's funny because they have questions for those two. And, and again, the, the issue was that they would just, you know, if we didn't have the question, the answer to their question, whatever the question was, it just seemed that, okay, then they just cut that line. And that's not fair that the question is an answer because they're voting on the budget the second week on, on that aspect. So, so as a, as a board, we, we need to, at some point in time, as we go forward in the process, we need to discuss that.
I understand though, John, you'd mentioned too, they received our budgets with plenty of time. So they were able to review the budget a week, two weeks before that specialist came in. So their question should have been ready.
Well, one would hope.
Well, and they could, there were plenty of times that people sent questions that we can advance and we're able to get written replies to.
I think that, that process, I think you need to confirm that a little bit more with them. You know, right now, it's going through the chair, but I think we, we went around and round about that. But, but I, I think as a, as a school board, and as the school board, part of the school board reps, that a budget committee member should be available to send, you know, they used to be able to send the questions directly to Dr. Cutler or to Steve Martin. They send their questions, it wasn't a lot of emails. There's probably two or three of them that would send the emails. And they, and they dealt directly. And then, you know, a lot of different politics got in the way that sort of stopped that process.
I, I think the questions tend to fall into two categories. Why do you need this, week one? And what couldn't we do if we cut it in week two? And that's, I mean, I, you know.
Personally, and I think this is probably a conversation for Brian and Frank and, and Dr. Cochran, you guys may need to have a discussion whether or not you're willing to accept an email question from a budget committee without it. You know, they're, you know, the whole process is on this is because they were shooting emails all over the place and not understanding that they can't do that because they're a board and, you know, they can't have any conversation through email and that. And so, and so sometimes it feels that way. And so, you know, so we put safeguards in that that says, you know, we only want an email from the chair because we didn't want to get dragged into that, into the process there.
Cindy has contacted me this week, asking for a meeting, just a general conversation. And I suggested that we also invite Frank. So maybe that would be one of the topics that we talk about. Frank's back on next Monday. So we'll try to set something up for a time that's mutually convenient and-
Yeah, Brian, there's a school board rep, so that, again, I think there ought to be an easier way for them to get answers to their questions that are, you know, that's, you know. Right now, it has to go through Cindy, but I, I really believe that if they send a question, a member sends a question to Frank or to you, it really ought to be Frank as per case to the budget issues. And it only should be answered if it's a numbers question. If it's a question that says, "Why do you need this?", then that needs to be a discussion that they have in the room. Why you need something should not be an email conversation because we shouldn't have to justify to anybody privately why we're doing something. If they want to know about it, then it needs to be here so that the public can understand who's asking the question, why the question's being answered, and this is how we're answering that question. But if it's a number question, why are you, like here, they're asking why handicap transportation still has $44,000 available. I mean, for the most part, I believe that most questions will be directed for us, will probably be from Bill Spencer on, on, in that aspect. So-
Was that a question that was asked at the last meeting?
It was.
The answer is that, is that we had either two or three students move out of district.
And then the other one was-
In the January, early February timeframe.
And then we have, that is the same reason why we have 86,000 of handicap tuition still available. And then, and then the LMHS and CHS has 155,000.
Now, mind you, going into the budget, remember that we had deliberately, I had asked that we put special education on the very last night. Just before that, we had, in one week, two students move in. And the, the tuition and transportation requirement went up by about $130,000 within a five-day span. And that's how volatile it is. And, and we keep telling the board that it's that volatile. If you're in a large enough district, that volatility plays out over a larger set of numbers and there's some stability to it. In our case, it's really not. So partly through the budget season, we, we end up with students coming in with IEPs in hand that mandate certain things. And whether we agree with them or not, we're legally bound to, to honor the IEPs written by the prior school district. And so, you know, and it's just, it's just that volatility. So I was aware that that question was asked. I think maybe it was you that updated me on that. And so Devin indicated it was just a matter of-
Did you get them all of four or five questions that they?
Not all of them. I think I had just gave them a heads up on that.
Okay, there are four or five questions that if, if you pull them off the minutes or something, that, that need to get to the administration. They're also looking for revenue numbers when they get the budget. I think Frank almost fell out of his seat because he had asked them about that three years ago when he was on the budget committee and they didn't want revenue numbers. I, I told him that you'll get the revenue numbers when the school board has, has the numbers available or whatever.
I can tell you that the adequacy aid from the state came into the penny, what was projected. So there's, there's no loss there.
They are, they were, they asked me, and I did not answer, why the school board, and in this case, S.A.U. staff, would not prepare the MS-27 for them. And not wanting to answer for the administration.
We'll have to defer that one to Frank.
I said, "It's your form." And so there was some given back, you know, given forth back on that. But I did not answer that question.
Did you ever mention that it used to be a joint effort as far as putting that form together?
Uh, if the joint effort meant all they had to do was sign the document, then yes.
I'd say to what level is a joint, but, yeah.
Yes. That would have been, yes. And that was, that was Steve doing it. But at, you know, it is their form, it's their responsibility to fill it out and deliver it to the state. Now, the key is that it does have repercussions off the school boards. So I think that's why Steve, Steve did it in the past, so. And, and as for the next committee, do we have a scheduled meeting for our building committee?
No, but once we get into May, I believe we'll have to schedule a couple before summer.
So do you handle setting those up or?
Yes, I do, in my spare time.
I know, you have so much of it. But please, before you do that, at least contact me so I can check my schedule. That's all I have in my two points. And they're looking for the answers to those questions at their next meeting?
Yeah.
Not the MS-27, but the, the tuition and all the other reasons. Oh, the other thing was, they would like a more timely delivery of the end-of-the-month financial reports. So if we can maybe, I know our meetings are only on the first and third week, but right now, I believe we're running on the second and fourth for the next May and June, I believe. And what are we, are we next week or are we two weeks from today?
Two weeks, but they'll have one this week.
Okay.
Because I talked to Mr. Markowitz about it and he said, "Go ahead and give them what they want."
Okay, yeah. So if, and, and they would like, they liked the detail that Steve used to do. And I said, "Well, that was Steve's report." If it's just the numbers with the full 56-page backup behind it, then, then that's what they'll, I mean, they basically get, that's what they get from the town, but they get it every Friday. They get an update on the town budget every Friday, gets, gets sent out. I don't know if we have to go to that level, but we probably should be sending it out. You know, since it doesn't, since he's not writing a, a report with it, then he ought to be able to send it out to the school board members and to the budget committee at the same time.
All right.
Any other committees?
Perkman, I couldn't make the first meeting because by the time I found the timeframe, I already had.
Get down to things.
Exactly. And your next one's right before the next meeting, so it's 2:00, 3:00, whatever next meeting is.
Hold on, officials, unfinished business. 2014-15 school district calendar.
So the discuss, the changes that we discussed last time of moving the end-of-year holiday to November 4th for the federal election and moving the P-Day to the 4th. Five out of six building administrators were very supportive. And so was Dr. Hiong. If you opened in, in-
Five out of six? You say five out of six were supportive?
Yeah. You can get six out of six, you couldn't get them to agree on anything.
So, so I did have a couple of questions on your calendar before you, before we approve it. First of all, I'm just shocked that it's the first two months of the year are the only time we go to school 20 days out of the year, I think. Well, I guess I take that back, in March we do. So my, my feeling was, since we're giving them like two days in November, that the 18th of March, two-hour delay for the 18th of March is really not necessary. I mean, the teachers are going to have, there's, there are three full-day teacher workshop days plus three delayed opening days. So that's 30 hours of time. I don't think we need an additional two hours for the high school on March 18th.
Yeah, especially throughout the 10th and they have a half-day in April.
Or actually, if you want to move April 15th delay to March 18th delay for all schools and make the 15th a full school day, I would be okay with that.
Yeah, if we did, well.
I mean, in March, they already have a full day off on the 10th.
Yes, they do.
And then just a week later, we're giving them two more hours of a delay opening. And, 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 you know, I understand they're doing, that there's whole workshops and stuff planned during that.
If the board's inclined to, there is such a thing as getting momentum. And, and one of the reasons that people weren't all that concerned about the November 4th day is that it's so, November's so hacked up already. It's not like you're breaking up momentum. So they felt it was actually better to, to create chunks of time where you have, you know, five-day weeks. If the board is, is looking to make a change, the March 18th, CHS only two-hour delay would probably be the, the one that would make the most sense. They do have a full day of PD eight days before that.
So that would be my recommendation of a change on that. Other than that, they're not in school enough.
And if you opened an earlier version, there was a mistake. The, in the June calendar, it had the 24th on the right as the last day with four non-blizzard-bag snow days, but the 23rd was highlighted. So Michelle has updated that. And so if you're going, opening the document now, it reads correctly.
You have other questions, comments, concerns?
So you want to eliminate the March 18th?
It's his calendar. If he agrees to the change, then we can, we don't need to make a, a motion on the change. We can just make a motion to accept the calendar with the March 18th, two-hour delay removed. And I'll make that motion.
Second. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Stay.
Operating budget update?
We are-
So based on our calendar here, are we sending the budget? Are we, are you delivering the budget to the budget committee on November 7th? Is that your plan?
That'll be tough, but-
Well, you have us at a, a budget committee meeting on the 13th. And I don't actually believe that they're going to have us until the 2nd of December. I think they're going to try to do it in six meetings again. So if you hammer out the dates that you think you're going to have the, if it's the 14th, then we may be able to be part of the meeting on the 20th. That would give them seven meetings to go through the process.
We have a conversation with Mr. Markowitz. It'll be his second time through with the software. And for-
He had said something about actually-
Principles, it'll be, for two of the principals, it'll be their third budget through. And for Mr. Leclay, his eighth or ninth budget through, so.
Well, he's, Frank had said something about actually starting the budget review during the summer, having the principals working on it over the summer months so that it's not waiting till September when all the other stuff occurs, so.
We're going to have a, a two or three-day planning session, third week of July this summer. And that'll be one of the agenda items for them to start working on. So if they can get that done, you know, in July, August to start, so that everything is set to start the meetings when teachers come back in the last week of August, then we can see about trying to hit those timelines.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I just don't know that, you know, we seem to have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven meetings in a row. That just seems an awful long time for our budget. I mean, it, it, again, it's a fairly simple process.
We shortened it up this year a lot. And I think, I think we still maintain the integrity of the budget process.
No, I think, I, yeah, I totally agree. I mean- I mean, it's, it's really not complicated.
This schedule's a whole lot easier to mess with down the road, because, of course, it's a very small number of people that impact it, and the, you know, that, the budget sequence going on into the Budget Committee is probably the one set of meetings of the year that we have, have the most constraint around.
I did let them know that I did not expect that the SAU, so the school board would probably not have representation available on the 23rd, the 25th, the 30th, or the 1st of December.
It's probably a good call.
And that, and that our first meeting in January was not until the 7th. And there was some concern on their part on Warren articles, and, and their timeframe for their, their meeting, their presentation to the town.
Well, you have to remember that we won't have negotiations this year, so Mr. Barker and I won't know what to do with all our free time.
Yeah.
It's hardy. You know, that fourth night meeting a week was real, something I looked forward to for that, for that two straight months.
So, you know, as we're going through the process, you know, they would like to be able to, and they, and they had, you know, they agreed to their rules, which are, they will accept and review and discuss anything at any meeting, but they do not vote for a week on whatever it is that they, that they, they had. But there is, you know, they were hoping that the town would not, you know, keep making changes to the budget like they, like they did last year, but, you know, Frank had a pretty good argument in the fact that, he said, you know, "Most of the changes we brought to you were to save taxpayers' money, because we no longer needed the money in this budget, because we had done, you know, something different," so. But I'll make a motion to accept our school board meeting calendar as is today.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Boys are all there. So, we missed, skip over Dr. Carrigan's operating budget update.
Well...
There's nothing.
The default, Frank and I are going both this in two different ways. The difference technically between the operating budget and the default budget was $174,000 and change. But the reality is, not everything that should have been in the operating budget that we knew was going up wasn't in it. So, my best guess is that the, the amount of money that we're short is closer to $200,000 than the 174. You have to remember that last year's budget was fairly tight, and then we had $150,000 reduction in salaries for this year, which explains why we are running about 99% of salary and benefits spent or encumbered at this point in time. And then, for next year, at the end, $50,000 was taken out of benefits. So, the $200,000 that we used to have, you know, to budget to, and then turn back to the town, is gone. So, I've started looking at reductions, Frank has started looking at, working with the rest of, with the HR Director and the payroll coordinator on moving the rollover of salaries and benefits into the 14-15 year. I can tell you that Frank has a fairly high degree of confidence in terms of the projected We have added the halftime GMS technology position, as you know, but the money to cover that, estimated at 25, 262, was funded through the Warren article, so that bumps the, the budget up. We added a 1.0 LMS sped teacher that was in, should have been in the default budget. And we had the grade-two position that was still in the budget, because it was there the prior year. But again, there were all sorts of utility increases and bus increases that we had to look at. So, when we look at the projected salaries based on Warren Article 1, sorry, Warren Article 2, we're looking at a, at a projected difference over a more than $6.5 million salary budget of somewhere around $40,000. So, our projections, based on all vacant positions being filled at an average salary cost of $50,524, is sort of the exact middle of our grade-and-step scale. Then, we'll have a whopping total of 40-some thousand. We also riffed a high school English position, which put us up around 80-some thousand dollars. The healthcare numbers were off from what we had anticipated they were higher. And so, I asked Tracy to go back and look at what healthcare changes we'd had since we ran those original projected healthcare costs in early October. And we have had either four or five people change their healthcare status. The total annual cost change is $48,803.28, which takes away more than half of that cap that we had from the other two. So, we're not at a final, final number yet, but we're anticipating that it's going to be very close. Remember, we still have to, to see what money, what healthcare savings we get. We did, I think, run a pretty conservative estimate of the 97 LEA members. We anticipated five single, five two-person, and five family would be at the more, at the cheaper rate, and everybody else, the other 83, 82, would be all at the more expensive plan. And so, that's how we priced it out. It's now actually at 102 people, LEA members who are on healthcare. So, that's where we are with, with that. Frank has sent out the 14-15 budget to the budget managers, asked them to look at places where we could protect the high-value and strategic places, and start to look at what might be a lower priority if we need to go there. And unfortunately, this year's budget was the first good budget for buildings and grounds in several years. And next year, it may be the only place that we have to go to if we needed money, so.
Not a happy situation.
Frank has also started negotiations with First Student, who were the successful bidder in Nashua. They've signed a five-year deal with Nashua, and...
How much more did that contract cost Nashua? Since they came up with a brilliant idea of negotiating this thing, how much more did that new contract cost them?
I don't have that figure in front of me, but I know that Mr. Markowitz does. Here's the thing...
They tax any of that money out to us?
The 25% estimate, based on our understanding of the situation, would probably be what we'd be hit with if we did a one- or two-year deal. There's really good reasons to, we're in, we got the paperwork in a time that we actually have a contract extension option, as opposed to renegotiating and doing a whole new RFP. There's nobody else around who really wants our business, and tying in, in the same five-year cycle with Nashua makes perfect fiscal sense, both for us and for First Student. So, that's the route that we're going to go, and Frank believes that if we can negotiate a longer-term deal, that would allow them to recoup their losses over a longer period of time, because he really believes that they actually were not making money. Yeah. We, our best guess is that, is that they, at best, broke even on their investment.
That's good for us.
Yes, we got a very good deal. That we might get it down as low as 15% on a five-year deal. But that's, that's a best, best-case scenario.
15% year one, or over the 5?
15% year one of a five-year deal, as opposed to 25% year one.
What, you know, and I only think outside the box here, but, you know, we had talked, as we were going through this process of, of, you know, store and the buses here.
All of those things are in play.
And, you know, and is that something that we're going to try to do, because it saves on the cost?
Frank has, has always...
I know the buses need to go over to Nashville for maintenance and stuff, but...
In Nashua's case, if it was, if it was STA, they would have had to find a parking space, and they, I think, would have been more open to that. But I think Frank has, has indicated to First Student that anything is on the table that might be able to result in some savings to us, including the options of, you know, maybe one fewer bus and slightly longer runs. I don't like the option of just saying...
Get my kids to the bus stop now, and I could just, yeah, four or five minutes to it. You know, I've got to tell you, I pulled up the LMS yesterday to drop Joshua off, because him and buses are never going to work in the morning that early. The line, you know, how you go around the school and drop off over here. Okay, this is the end of the school over here. It was almost here. And parents were doing, I was going to say something to Tom, but parents were doing the cut-in, and, you know, they didn't want to do the six, seven-minute wait.
Cutting through the parking lot?
Cutting into the parking lot, which was unsafe in senses, they were, every three or four cars were doing it and dropping kids. But there may be something you should pass on to him that, you know, that should be another place that's monitored, because parents were doing that, even though the kids know they're not supposed to be. And it was, the kids were walking with parents that had parked and were walking into school for whatever reason, and stuff like that, but...
In terms of the budget process, May is open enrollment month for us, and then new hires will be coming in after that. The magnitude of change in healthcare is going to vastly outweigh all of the other variables that we have in play, quite honestly.
So, when do we get, when do we get signed contracts back? I wonder if they do?
Contracts are going out tomorrow. So, usually, it's two weeks.
So, in May, whether or not everybody's coming back?
Well, we usually allow staff to sign their contract and then resign if it's a reasonable amount of time. You know, depending on the position and the pool that's out there, sometimes we're a little more reasonable than, than we would be at other times.
Well, they don't send back their contract, then, they have two weeks, and...
And I'll update you on, on public as well, lots of other things. But that's where we are. The big, we could be on the downside of that equation very quickly, if either more people continue to add, or more people go for the more expensive health plan, and we have fewer than 15, on, in which case, we could be in trouble. Lori tells me there's an opening for Lunch Monitor for me at noon hour. That'll save us about $8,000, no, $5,000.
All right. Next up is the Health Trust Award.
Yeah, the district bought an award from Health Trust for increasing the percentage of completed health assessments, and we usually use that towards wellness incentives.
I'll make a motion to accept the award.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Four, zero, zero.
We do have a manifest.
Do you guys get three signatures on that thing?
I haven't typed it. I didn't see it over there.
Get it over to us quick.
No.
Uh-oh. Oh. Did you sign them?
I did sign them.
Okay.
Next week.
Next week. I teach about them next week. These are all the expenses, and we have to sign off on, sorry, I played them on the line. On the, on approving, there's, we signed this sheet, it's the, and then this is all the backup to it, and we're signing it so that they can pay the bill.
Oh, okay.
Everyone's wanted to look for, you know, if I'm going to want to pull this and stuff.
Saying no public, Republican.
I think we're good. I think we're good. Make a motion, go to non-public? Or I guess he has to read the paragraph first, doesn't he?
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................